Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the National Board of Education's Humans Resources Committee at the Nashua High School North Boardroom. It is 5:32 and it is March 11th. And can we do a roll call for attendance?
Yes, it's just me, Ms. Bishop, and Ms. Gilio. And Ms. Daniels Williams is here, and Mr. Bous is here as well from Central Office.
Okay, so let us look, all we have tonight are personnel recommendation, which is not even plural, because we have one person that's recommended. Are there any questions on this recommendation?
No.
No? Well, then, I'm looking, I will make a motion that we accept the personnel recommendation made tonight?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. If there is no other business, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good evening. The meeting is ending at 5:34.
Okay, all done. Welcome, everybody. It is Monday, March 11th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. We're in the Nashua North Boardroom, and I'm calling to order this Board of Education meeting. Ms. Lampier, can you do the roll call and then the prayer?
Sure. Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Print?
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Claffey hasn't arrived yet.
Oh, he's, he's not going to be here, neither is Ms. Darling.
Okay, so, so Mr. Claffey is not here, and Ms. Darling is not here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
I'm here. And Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Okay, and our, and our board members. Rep. Farley?
Here.
And Rep. Mira?
Here.
And then we also have Dr. Andreid, Mr. Poska, and right now. Okay. Hey. Oh, and the prayer, let's see. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen. Thank you.
All. To the Florida Act of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Dr. Sartis here. Okay, so tonight, to open up the meeting, we have a presentation from Myrna Nikitas, from Sealing, sorry. Sealing Smiles Across New Hampshire. So tonight, we're delighted to have with us Myrna Nikitas, a dental hygienist who is leading the Sealing Smiles Across New Hampshire Pilot Program in our schools. Sealing Smiles is a new in-school cavity prevention program. Myrna knows our students well and is serving our students from preschool to grade eight this year. To date, she has screened more than 500 students and applied thousands of sealants to help support good oral health and promote living in a feel-good, healthy lifestyle among our students. Welcome, Myrna.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me to speak before you this evening. As you can see, I'm very passionate about this dental initiative. I've been a hygienist for over 20 years, and in the past seven years, I've taken a turn in my career to really dedicate myself in public health. Just gonna go on to the next slide. So I am a registered dental hygienist. I'm also a certified public health hygienist. On my days off and volunteering, I do a lot of presentations to a lot of the schools here in Nashua, a lot of the elementary schools. So I'm also known as the Tooth Fairy. I brought my wings, very windy tonight, so they survived the blustery wind. So I'm glad to be here today to, to talk to you. It's a passion of mine to serve the community and really promote oral health, because as we all know, oral health is very important to our whole body. Our mouth is connected to our whole body. So as I go along this presentation, I put some slides just as a reference, so you can get an idea of how the initiative is going and how this dental initiative came about. So here's the flyer that's before you that I had passed out. It just talks about the, the program itself and the services that are offered. Initially, when the program was, was started, we really wanted to capture and reach the families in the Nashua community. In doing so, we have coordinated with and collaborated with the Nashua School District, Stacy Hines, Dr. Andreid, and the superintendent's office, and staff, support staff, nurses, and a whole team that's really helped us take this to where it is today. We also coordinated with the ELL personnel to make sure that we were able to, again, reach the families in Nashua. This flyer that you see before you and all the consent forms that were going home were translated into five different languages so that they could reach home and parents could have an understanding of what was being offered to their child. The services that were offered here, the Nashua schools, all elementary schools and middle schools, are all free services, no matter if you, if your child has Medicaid insurance, state insurance, no insurance, or private insurance. The services that were offered is oral health screening, fluoride varnish, guided toothbrush instruction, oral health education, dental sealants, silver diamine fluoride, and their protective restoration, which is also called a temporary restoration. These kids are not missing more than 15 or 20 minutes of their school time, so it's hassle-free, they're not bused to a facility, they're, they're seen at their school, at their comfort level. So all the consent forms went home to each child, and if you wanted your child to participate in this program, you have to fill out the consent form and bring it back to school, which those were also translated into five different languages. So this really cuts deep in my heart. So why Nashua? Well, last, the 2022-2023 school year, the New Hampshire Oral Health Program conducted oral health screenings of third-grade students to assess the oral health status of children throughout New Hampshire. The data that was collected and analyzed from the dental screenings revealed, be ready for this, Nashua had the highest rate of untreated dental decay in the whole state of New Hampshire. Yes, wow. So you're talking other areas within the state. Concord, New Hampshire, has a sealing coalition that's been going on for 20-plus years, offering these services. Manchester, New Hampshire, has a public health hygienist, goes to every school, visiting the schools and providing these services. So I ask you today to really think about these services that I'm providing to, to the kids and the community, because it's very important. So with the help of the CDC and the Oral Health Program, the funds were, were given to the Nashua school or Nashua community to help mitigate the, the decay problem that we have. So I have been trying for years to start a school-based dental program. So when I was presented with this project, I was delighted, because I knew the impact this was gonna have within our community and the kids. All right, so this is the team. This isn't the actual team, but this is just a picture of really what went into this program to really get this going. So last July, I called Stacy Hines, who's the communications director for the superintendent's office, and I said, "Hey, Stacy, my name is Myrna, I'm a public health hygienist. I've got a deal for you, and this is coming to Nashua, New Hampshire. I need your help to really get this project going." She immediately talked to Dr. Andreid and said, "You know what? This is very important." I could see the need, and she was just as astonished as I was when we got the news that Nashua had the highest prevalence of dental decay. So myself, I have a dental assistant that I travel with. She's fluent in Spanish, she's great, we work well together. I call that team up there, the Dynamic Dental Team, because we, we're a team of, of people who are kind-hearted, have one mission in mind, is to promote oral health and really help our students and within the Nashua community. So again, the flyers that you see in front of you are all translated, except for the silver diamine fluoride fact sheet. After the, the child has a dental screening completed by, by me, it, of course, does not take the place of a dental exam, but a referral is given to the child if they do not have a dental home or if they have some urgent needs. I made sure to put on our consent forms the reason why, you know, a barrier to the child not accessing dental care. Could it be transportation? Could it be language? Could it be your insurance? Could it be finding a provider? Could it be, you know, Mom and Dad can't take time off for work? Could it be a behavioral issue? Could it be anxiety? Because that's important to me. I want to know why this child hasn't had access to dental care. Every child after having the services completed at the school has a progress report of services that are completed that goes home to their child, so that the parent can see what was done that day, services completed in the recommendations. This is just a fact, you know, from the Roseman University, that untreated decay is the most prevalent condition in the world and might affect 2.4 billion people. Usually, it's low-income, particularly vulnerable communities. We want to treat the, they want to treat the consequence rather than manage the disease. Oral health is one of the most common culprits of absenteeism. It's more common than asthma, it's more common than any other disease that's preventable, it's more common than even diabetes. So children who miss more than 10% of their school days for any reason fall into a category of chronic absenteeism. So if they fall into this category, their learning is obstructed, their academic standing is at risk, and their chances of becoming a school dropout increases. This is taken from the Roseman University as well. So children ages five to 17 miss nearly 2 million school days in a single year due to dental health problems. Oral health in America, reported by the Surgeon General, calls this oral health issues as a silent epidemic hitting American children hard. And, you know, since COVID as well, it's probably increased a lot of these problems. Having dental pain can decrease the ability to encourage our child to concentrate, decrease the ability in children's school performance, change their ability to speak correctly, decrease their self-confidence from an unhealthy smile. And I've seen this firsthand on a daily basis with the kids that I see. Do these school-based dental programs help to break barriers to dental care, whether it be transportation, cost, fear, anxiety, again, parent taking time off work, behavioral concern, and also trying to find a provider that maybe takes their insurance? So one of the services that we provide are dental sealants. Dental sealants are a thin coating that is applied to the chewing surfaces of the back teeth. This thin layer is a protective shield that blocks food and germs, and is also bacteriostatic. The type of material that we're using, it's not requiring like a curing light, it's very easily manipulated. We just apply it with a brush on the tooth. And dental sealants reduce the risk of tooth decay by 35%. This is a child that I saw within the schools, middle school. The tooth behind it, there are little pointer on this, does anybody know? Okay. The back tooth, all the way in the back, it's a thin plastic-looking coating, is a dental sealant. The tooth in front of it is a tooth that, this is all permanent teeth, by the way. So the tooth in front of it is a tooth that he got when he was six years old, is now having abscess. Do you see that bubble on the side there? This tooth is gone, it needs to be extracted. This child was 12 years old. So if we were able to put a sealant on his teeth, like the tooth in back of it, we might have been able to protect that tooth and prevent it from cavity. This student also went to the dentist, the dental facility here in Nashua. Mom didn't have the means to pay for this tooth extraction, so they dismissed the patient. And when I saw this patient at the Nashua schools, I connected him with the provider to take that tooth out. This is a student that I just saw today, a five-year-old student. The black area, the picture on the left, is decay. The temporary restoration that's forward and easing, it can stop the progression of the cavity is on the right, that's the filling that I placed today. Just painting it on with a brush. This is our setup, so, at one of our schools. So we have the, our laptops, everything is disposable, all the materials are disposable. We have a portable chair, portable unit. I'm not sure if this plays, I can show you a video of it, I took a little video. I think we get the idea. This is an event, but myself and my colleague attended the Y. So just some numbers for you, over 570 students have been screened since November 15th, when this program started. Over 3,700 dental sealants have been placed, over 570 Florida applications, over 220 students were referred to a dental provider, either because of pain or needed to establish a care someplace. So far, we've visited 10 schools. That's my contact information, if anybody wants to chat more, have some ideas. So the reason why I'm, I'm coming to talk to you today is I'm not sure how the future holds for this, for the funding for this project. It's my dream, and it's my hope that this will be something that will be sustainable, integrated into the curriculum for Nashua students, because other parts of the state have a similar program. So I need your help to continue this, whether it be ideas for funding, I'll write grants, I'll do what it takes. But our kids need our help, and I'll be happy to provide the services. I love doing what I do, and I hope it shows, I'm very passionate about it. So thank you all for your time.
Cool. Comments or questions from the board? Ms. Gilio?
I have a couple of questions. This is the first year that we've been doing this?
This is a pilot program for this year, yes.
Okay, and when, when you address problems like the student who needed a tooth pulled and was referred to a dentist who refused to do it, what options do you have? How do you, does, first of all, does Medicaid cover any of this?
Medicaid does cover some of these services, however, this child didn't have Medicaid at the time.
Okay, and then what do you do to resolve transportation problems? That seems huge.
So either me coming into the schools, if a child does need additional care, the Oral Health Program will help pay for an Uber, or help connect, myself, I help connect the child with a provider in the area. There's some pediatric dentists that I've connected with and collaborated with to see our, these kids who have some needs. And again, some of the, this is part of the grants, if Mom, Dad, a family member doesn't have the money to pay for, you know, the child to have these services, the grant will cover this. We're fortunate for that. I can't even tell you how many calls I get in a week from a school nurse about, you know, a child having a toothache. Myself and my colleague will pack a bag, pack our stuff, and we go right to that school to see that student.
Thank you. I do have an additional question.
Sure.
So, of course, it just flew out of my mind. If I think of it later, I'll come back.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Lampier?
Hey, I'm just, first, I just want to say this is the most impactful presentation I've seen since I've been on the board, and thank you so much for the work that you do. I'm just wondering, how far ahead are we funded right now?
We're funded until June 30th of this year.
Till June 30th. Okay, do you have, are there grants available that, that you know of that are, that are out there that we can get?
Yes, there are. I'll tell you, I rent to the Children's Health Foundation, I rent to the casinos. I've written, you know, I've never been a gambler, but I started getting scratch tickets and just praying on a, you know, my mouth to God's ears, please give us some money so we can continue this. I was one of those kids that received dental care in a school, so I know how impactful it is.
What, what can we do as a board to support you? Are there any specific things?
Maybe help with providing me some resources where I could apply for some grants, you know, and myself and my colleague, I'll tell you, you know, our pay compared to private practice or whatever is, is not comparable, but, you know, to make a living, be able to provide the services, everything that we're using is disposable, and just provide free care to these kids. So maybe, you know, just providing me some ideas of grants of who to write to. I know the city has a grant writer, maybe I can connect with them as well, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
We will definitely look into what we can do to continue you on, but find some resources, that's an excellent opportunity. I know if, if you don't mind emailing me the list of the dentists that take Medicaid, because I, I work in, in the medical field and I struggle finding pediatric dentists that take Medicaid to make referrals to, so I would, I would love that list just to use it in my own work.
I will email you a list of providers that I'm aware of. I don't have a list like from the state, unfortunately, you know, but I will do what I can to, to email you a list of providers within the area, Hudson, Airburst, and, you know, Nashua, pretty locally, for sure.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, we appreciate you. So let's bring this up to our consent agenda. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Gil?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Comment, no, no comments or questions. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us up to our first public question comment period. Mr. Johnson, can you give me the, Andy, Andy sheet? Okay, and I will remind everybody, first public comment is 15 minutes, three minutes per person. I will keep an eye on the 15 minutes. If we get to it and need to extend it, I'll be looking for somebody to make that motion. But present, commenters, please keep your responses to three minutes. I'll keep a timer on. If we're not making intense eye contact at the end of three minutes, I will spontaneously shout out, but I will try to be respectful, so every once in a while glance at me. Okay, so up first is, without my glasses, that looked like Deshane's, but it's Sarah DeSaulnier. DeSaul-
Wow, that was pretty close, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Sarah DeSauliers, and I work for the district, and I wanted to just put a few comments out for consideration when you are looking at how the middle school staffing is all being rearranged, because there's a lot going on about going from five-person teams to four-person teams. And just a few things to be aware of. One of it, your slideshow, that the numbers of students have significantly decreased, but our staffing has increased, but those numbers don't tell us what the staffing is doing, and it doesn't reflect the increased need we have for support staff, the amount of additional staff we need for ELL and Special Student Services. So even if our numbers are coming down, if our students are needier, we need more support for them, and I don't think the number is exactly clarified what those points were. Also, nowhere in that slides, so maybe it will be coming up in the presentation, but nowhere in the slides did it explain how effective having two English periods a day was. It didn't give us any information about why we went to two English and what the numbers said about increasing our English skills, our language skills, or even why it was inconsistent between the different middle schools. My third point was, I do genuinely understand that there's a lot of concern because of this changing would require different staffing, but I wanted the board to just be cognizant that a third of the proposed middle school day is going to be unified arts staff, but there's no mention anywhere in that presentation how unified arts will be distributed, or how we're going to handle changing numbers in unified staff. And I, I understand that people are aware of it, I know our principals are aware of it and are trying to figure out what to do, but it didn't know if everyone in the board, you know, had that on their plate, since there's so many details going on. But a third of your middle school teachers are unified arts, and we do need to be able to properly support kids when they're not taking English, math, science, or social studies. And then my last point was, just to be aware, there are 63 working days until all this needs to be in effect, and we cannot come back in August and magically make everything come together, the one day of prep before new students arrive. And I know it's super complicated, but you've got a lot of people who are counting down, and it is 63 working days. So thank you.
Thank you. John Michael Pearson?
John Michael Pearson, 28 Massachusetts Drive, and also a district employee. I'd like the board to go to page nine under the Elm Street, where it reads 290 current students divided by three teams, which is equals 97 per team, and then it's divided by four classes, which equals 24.1. This information is inaccurate. The 97 should be divided by five classes. Every eighth-grade student goes to a fifth academic class, whether it be foreign language or a reading class. So the actual class size is right now in eighth grade at Elm Street is 19.4. This mistake sticks out to me, and I'm just not sure of the other mistakes on this document and this plan. Moving forward with that, it's also the four-person teams that bother me. When you're moving the four-person team, you're moving foreign language to UA. If you have an eighth-grade band student who's in band sixth and seventh grade and eighth grade, and they take a foreign language, that's all they get for UA is that whole year. They don't get gym, they don't get tech ed, they don't get any FCS, they don't get art, they don't get the eighth, the eighth-grade art class credit they could have, they lose it. So if you have a band course and language arts kid, foreign language kid, that's impossible under this new plan. So I think the four-person team is a huge mistake this year, with all the other changes going on at the middle school level. It hurts the class sizes at all three middle schools, not just McCarthy, not just Penachuck, not just Fairgrounds, all three, because it's gonna affect all three class sizes going to four-person teams. It just does. Four and five is different, it's math. And it also creates less opportunities for eighth graders to take unified art classes, and that scares me. The highest achieving kids that want to be in the band, that are in the foreign language classes, they're gonna have to struggle, and they might drop band, they might drop foreign language because they want to take gym or tech ed, or there's a cool new FCS thing that we have at this new building with all this cool stuff, and they're not gonna have this opportunity. So I just think the four-person teams for this year, coming year, is a mistake until we settle in and figure out what's going on, because we really don't know what's going on. And like the person before said, there's only 63 days left. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Hoffman?
Gary Hoffman, 38, Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Andreid and his team for providing us with the slideshows we asked last time, that you provided us some information about the middle school plan, and that was done, so thank you. I'm going to just cite pages 12, 14, and 16 in the slideshow, and I was wondering, when you're going over it, if you could just explain the methodology, because I'm, I'm just a little bit confused about the numbers. So if you look at the current sixth grade, it has a total of 647 students. However, the projections for next year's seventh grade is 598 students, and I was just wondering why the 50-student decline between sixth and seventh grade. Furthermore, you see a similar thing from the transition from seventh to eighth grade. This right now, they have the configuration being 664 students in the seventh grade. However- However, in the eighth, uh, when they, these students go to the eighth grade in twenty twenty-five, that number drops uh, to uh, six hundred and twenty-seven. So, you know, it's another uh, forty-two students or so, or forty students. Uh, so yeah, if you could just comment on to why those projections were that way, I'd appreciate it. Uh, secondly, I I I'm looking on page twelve here. I'm looking at the sixth grade. I know we're uh, projecting that some kids will go to charter schools. Um, and I do appreciate that you were going to revisit that Fairgrounds number, because I I know that that two-twenty-eight number is likely to come down for sixth grade next year. Um, but even if it comes down some, that that those class sizes look pretty high. Um, so I do hope you revisit and consider some uh, hi, um, including some additional staff in the sixth grade at Fairgrounds. I'm also looking at Elm Street McCarthy Sixth Grade. They have a projected of twenty-four point eight students. Um, now, I know that number will come down, but over in the notes, you have that uh, some additional special education students will likely be coming into the si- into the sixth grade as well. So you may want to consider adding a two-person or a different sort of configuration for McCarthy to provide them some additional support. Last comment, and then I'll take a seat. Uh, I just was curious what the, I was looking at the last thing where it said projective elementary staffing without reductions on page eighteen. Uh, I saw that the several of the teacher counts were highlighted green and yellow, and um, I was just curious why. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adam Marku?
Adam Marku. I live on Ford Jewelry Lane. I'm president of the Nashville Teachers Union. Um, my, the comments that I had for last meeting were shared with you in writing and then um, read to you at the board meeting, and I would reiterate my issues and the issues with moving the line and what they've done to McCarthy's population and Penachuck's population. I was surprised pleasantly when looking at the uh, PowerPoint that's been referenced about the potential for additional staff at Fairgrounds Middle School to accommodate and a- address those class sizes. And my comments at the last meeting, the executive board of the NTU had with the superintendent and um, the assistant superintendents was, we are looking at vast changes of the three middle schools next school year. Considerable number of changes. Throw out that Elm Street has to pack and move to McCarthy, you're making other significant changes to the number of people on a team. The people that these people are already working with will change. The number of periods in a school day are looking to change. There's talks about changes to certain curriculums in certain content areas next year. Can we pump the brakes on something, please? Because I didn't know there was sixty-three days. Where did Sarah go? Sixty-three counts, is that sixty-three sleeps left or sixty-two now that today's over? I mean, we've known McCarthy's coming for, I don't know, how long. And I get that some of this planning had to do with waiting on who's retiring, who's resigning, where are the kids and where are they going and who's staying. But, I mean, we have a lot left to do. And by we, I mean them, who are out there that are going to pack boxes at Penachuck Fairgrounds in Elm Street and move from one place to another, on top of everything else that we're going to ask them to do, which includes teaching the children sixty-two more days, which I think is lost in all of this too, that the students are still at Fairgrounds, Penachuck, and Elm Street. And you can't just be like, oh, don't come to school today, we're going to pack or move, right? We do that everywhere else except schools. So that's something to keep in mind as well. And um, the last thing I'll comment on is my surprise to see the elementary numbers included tonight. And the trepidation that that gives me, that we're talking about significant reductions in force at the middle schools, and now we're going to do the same potentially at the elementary schools. While the population has changed and may have decreased, the needs that come with our population in two thousand twenty-four compared to when I started teaching in two thousand eight are vastly different. You can ask any person behind me, um, what they saw since they've been here till now. At the end of the day, we have to be mindful of the budget. I understand that piece. There's not a million dollars, although a billion dollars, million, whatever, just to use. But we also be mindful that we have to educate these students, and we need to provide these people with the resources. They need to do that effectively. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the um, I took notes on what everybody said. I I hope that we address those in the upcoming presentation, and I think we will. Um, but this brings us up to the superintendent's comments, so I will uh, pass the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, update on high school sports. Congratulations to the North Boys Basketball Team for a masterful eighty-four sixty-eight game against Bedford High last week. Advanced into the Division One Championship Final at UNH yesterday. The Titans led by five points at half, but Pickett and Academy ran a hot streak in the second half of the game and outscored the Titans to win the championship. I'm confident the Titans will be back at UNH next year. Go Titans.
Just on the the heels of that, um, ETV wanted me to let everybody know that that game is being broadcast tonight after the meeting at nine o'clock, so you can watch Nashua North work their buttons off. Okay?
We gave away the ending.
Well, now you can watch it and make bets and pretend no one else knows. Sorry, continue on.
Congratulations to Bryn Teft, South Class of twenty twenty-five. If you remember, Bryn placed in the top ten of the New Hampshire Meet of Champions to earn a spot on the New Hampshire Women's uh, Ski Team. The New Ha- New Hampshire Woman won first place at the Eastern Region High School Championships last week in Aditash Mountain Resort. National Art and Music in the Schools Month, the art teachers from across the district graciously invite us all to attend the reception next Tuesday, March nineteenth at six P M. at South to celebrate Youth Art Month. This is a great event that showcases the creativity of our students from kindergarten through high school. The main street hallway will be lined with student art. It's a fantastic event. Please attend. We're happy to join members of the New Hampshire Chap- Chapter of the American Choral Directors Association in honor of Sarah Evans, Nashville High High School's South Choral Teacher and Director, and Brienne Biostoff, the Nashville High School North Choral Director um, and teacher. Both were nominated as the New Hampshire Choral Director of the Year. Congratulations to the five No- North Choral Students who auditioned and were invited to perform and sing at the American Choral Directors Association Festival last month in Providence, Rhode Island. They worked with top industry conductors, premiered a piece, met composers, composers, and watched professional groups perform while they were there. It was a great festival. Again, congratulations to Lillian Azavito, Nathan Telehante, Molly Dawson, Goss, Guston, um, Colin Streibner, and Gabby Wallace. And lastly, Meals Matter, Meals Matter Empty Bowls twenty twenty-four. Empty Bowls twenty twenty-four held last month raised nearly four thousand dollars. All the proceeds support our students and in need to be sure they have access to breakfast and lunch at schools. On behalf of Meals Matter, thank you for all the members of our sk- school community who supported the empty bowls. Thank you.
You. Um, board response to superintendent's comments. I'll start over here with Mr. Johnson.
Uh, no, thank you for the information. Nothing else.
Bryn?
Thanks for the information. I don't have anything else either.
Daniels Williams? Celia?
Always glad to hear wonderful things. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Raymond? Comment? Ms. Lampfier?
Um, I was able to attend the um, the Meals Matter program, and I saw some other school board members there. And um, I I'm Nate Burns and his staff, it looked like they worked really hard to make it a success. It was just like a a good event. And um, you know, to make sure that our, that our kids have um, school, have money to get their their lunches is really important. I know that um, kids that fall behind on their lunch money, it's a um, it can be quite humiliating. Um, so it's an important thing to keep in mind. It's a good way to um, to help our, to help our kids. Thanks.
Yeah, I also went to that. The jazz band played, and they had art on the walls, and it was, it was just a great opportunity. Now, I have to remember to keep my kids' lunch menu stocked, because I'm new to this. I, they're sick of me packing their lunches, and they're constantly in the negative, so. Anyway, I have no comments, so this brings us up to the student board comments, and I think it's Mr. Miras this week, right? Aren't you first? Oh, I'm off my.
Unfortunately not.
All right, Mr. Farley, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Yesterday, in a hard-fought battle, Titan Basketball Team lost the state championship game. As a fan, it was an incredibly fun game to watch, and I think that the Boys Basketball Team should be incredibly proud of themselves. They have an incredibly bright future ahead of them with four out of five starters planning on returning next year. And I look forward to watching the Titans once again dominate the courts next year and hopefully bring home the state title. Along with that, SAT and PSAT testing are on the horizon. As of now, the projec- the projected date of testing is March twenty-seventh. This can be an incredibly stressful time for many high schoolers, especially juniors, so parents, go easy on us. Other than that, South Student Senate will be reviews- reviewing the dress code either tomorrow or at their next meeting. And once we have approval from them, we can move forward in the process and schedule a meeting with Ms. Raymond and Mr. Poska to discuss the fine details. Uh, we have been working diligently to ensure that this dress code is as fair as possible and leaves little room for interpretation. Thank you.
Mr. Miras?
Good evening, everyone. I've got a lot of stuff here. I'd first like to give a shout out to the Boys four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team consisting of Michael Meneses, Ethan Schneider, Marcel Perry, and Ryan Jansen, ending the indoor season with an impressive time of one minute and thirty-three seconds last Friday, March eighth, at the New Balance Indoor Nationals Track Meet at the Reggie Lewis Track Center in Boston, and they now hold the school record for the indoor four-by-two-hundred-meter relay. And also to Naya Musa for competing in the girls' sixty-meter dash, ending with a time of seven point seven-six seconds. Job to all of them, and let's see what they do in the upcoming spring season. Tomorrow, March twelfth, is the chorus music in our Schools Month concert. Go and support them. I believe it starts at six-thirty. Also, bring your school-issued Chromebook to school as there, as there is a PSAT slash SAT prep session in the last twenty minutes of school. Um, as I understand it, this is just to make sure everyone's software works when that um, happens in the next coming weeks. Due to this, this uh, there is an early release, so school end at eleven forty-five. Remember to charge those Chromebooks tonight, so you don't come to school with a dead Chromebook. Um, the following day, Wednesday, March thirteenth, is the band music in our Schools Month concert. I'd welcome everyone to come. And that is also the night for parent-teacher conferences. Registration for spring sports ends next Monday, the eighteenth, so make sure you, make sure you sign your kids up. Um, as previously mentioned, the PSAT and SAT testing day will be on March twenty-seventh, so bring your school-issued Chromebooks. Again, make sure they are charged. Um, again, this is also going to be an early release day, ending at eleven forty-five A M. Um, leading up to the PSAT and SAT, the Math Honor Society will be providing tutoring during E-Block on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So you will definitely see me there in the next coming weeks. And to any sophomores, juniors, and seniors that drive yourselves to school, remember to get a parking pass. It's not that expensive and it's going to save you uh, the fines for getting towed. So, thank you.
You. When did you say the band in schools was?
Wednesday.
This Wednesday or next Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
Which one's for North? Both?
North is next Wednesday, South is this one, is this Wednesday.
The twentieth? Sorry, I'm just updating my calendar of things I need to know.
Here, Elm Street is going to both nights, so.
Only if you go, it depends on which school. I just didn't write it down. I I see a lot of Elm Street teachers here and recognize I am being like the worst mom lately, and I'm so sorry. It's been a little overwhelming up here. Okay, so we're going to go right up to um, no budget, no finance, we have no committee updates, but um, I will hand the floor over to Ms. Gilio for human resources.
Looking for a recommendation to spend the rules to consider items from the H R meeting held earlier this evening.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, so there was only one item tonight, which was a personnel recommendation for the hiring of, or the continuance of one person that's a continuing sub, and we approved it um, unanimously, all both of us, two of us. And um, so um, I would like all of us to, we'd have, we need a motion and then to go forward and agree with that.
So I'll make that motion. Uh, the motion was to approve and send to the, sorry, that was the old motion. So I moved to approve the personnel recommendations dated three eleven twenty twenty-four as presented in H R Committee.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything else from H R? Oh, okay. So this brings us up to um, our unfinished business in regards to the middle school restructuring. Um, Dr. Andre, I will hand the floor over to you.
So, thank you. Um, tonight, there's going to be a team approach um, to address a lot of the um, questions that came up and really show the the hard work um, and some of the conversations um, over the last year and a half on um, where we started and where we are today. But I also think it's really important where I did include a budget forecast, um, the twenty-year enrollment figures, um, staffing, as well as elementary, because we can't be having a conversation in isolation. So I think we really need to have a comprehensive um, conversation on how decisions at one level could be impacting other levels. I did not include in full transparency the high school numbers, but we had a conversation with the um, high school administrators on when they're developing the master schedule thi- this upcoming year. What's an appropriate class size to run? You know, if there's only eight kids signed up for an elective, should they be running that class? Um, so we're really looking at, again, um, right sizing um, as we kind of move forward. Um, because, oops, there we go. This is our budget forecast moving forward. So we received a letter from the mayor um, um, asking us to to stay around a a four percent increase to our operating budget. So just simple math, you know, this is in, well, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be rolling out our um, our budget to the the B O E through our budget process. But this is just, again, thirty thousand foot level, just to do simple math. So if we receive a four percent increase from the city on our um, operating budget of one hundred and twenty-one million dollars, it's roughly five million dollars next year of new monies. So if we take our human capital, our contractual obligations, all our uh, contracts that we have, just roll it forward and honor the the figures that are in the contract. Again, rough numbers for simple math tonight, it's approximately three point five million dollars. We also know that we need to invest in our ELL. Um, this is an area that um, has been under um, staffed, under um, uh, under recorded, I guess, under, under resourced. So if we look at the DOJ report and the number of minutes that our students um, need through ELL services, we need approximately twelve to fourteen more ELL teachers in the district. Just using math, it's simple, um, again, these aren't exact figures, but even if we say there's seventy thousand dollars a teacher, we're looking at anywhere from eight hundred and forty thousand to nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Even if it's at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars, it's a big number, no matter how we stress it. So again, and then if we, and that's a a federal mandate, we have to provide services. And the other federal mandate is around special education. So in the last couple of years, we were using close to a million dollars to support special education programs, whether it's agencies, outside services. So again, that's a federal mandate. We have to provide services for students um, through their I Ps. That's roughly another million dollars. Yes, exactly, right? So we're already down five hundred thousand dollars on this side. We're not talking about increases to plant ops, increases to transportation, increases in any other area. We're not talking about increases to plan ops, increases to transportation, increases in any other area. So we need to have some kind of conversations, uh, again, where- what's our priorities? Where do we need to- to- to move forward? So I agree with Sarah, this- this- there's a lot more to this story. But just overall, we see a declining enrollment. And then we also see the number of FTEs going up. And again, it's not delineated on, do we need more power educators, more ELL teachers, more special education? What are we looking at, smaller class sizes? But our number of FTEs went up. And now we just need to have the conversation, do we invest in the right place? So how do we right-size? So we don't- we're not saying we have to drop dramatically or anything like that, but we need to have the conversation, where are we gonna prioritize? And in the next couple of weeks, the next month, you're gonna hear in our budget, we cannot no longer ignore special education and ELL. That has to be a priority in the budget. So if that's roughly one-point-eight million dollars in special education, it needs to be absorbed somewhere. So that's where just context, when we have discussions on where do we need to go and where do we balance? So, those are hard conversations. But we need to be ready for it. And a- again, I think a lot of things are coming fast, but there's a lot of conversations that started back with Mark Conrad as well, years ago, that now are coming to our head. And so now's the time of how do we take, um, action with some urgency? Our kids can't wait another five years. So, again, these are the big conversations that we need to have and where are we gonna invest? So, even though we're talking about middle school tonight, I really want to give a K-eight kind of perspective. And even though, um, we're gonna be talking about middle school philosophy, experiences, there is money behind it. There is a budgetary concern where, I think, there's no one in this room who would- who would disagree with saying, "We just need more money. We don't wanna lose any teachers. We want it." Unfortunately, that's just not reality. So we need to have these kind of conversations, where are we gonna invest and what's the data behind it? So, tonight, I think we're gonna, you know, hear a lot of information, not from my mouth, but from our building- buil- uh, building principals, from members of the middle school steering committee, um, from members of our ELA- ELA steering committee, and what are gonna be the opportunities and experiences for our student as we move forward? And half the conversations are on how are we imagining, um, learning experiences at the hi- at the middle school level? How will we reimagine what our- our student experiences are? And I think we do that together. Yeah. Do you question?
Do you want me to hold questions till the end?
No, I- I- I mean, it's kind of a workshop, so, go ahead.
Thought you were- you were pausing and I was.
No, no, it's.
Thinking there. I just have a- a budget question before we move on to programmatic discussion. Um, and that is about, on the- the previous slide, where it talks about the mayor's proposal, um, and the operating budget increase. Does that include the, I'm trying to remember, twelve-ish million dollars additional that we're supposed to get from the state this year because of the increase in adequacy in the, uh, state budget?
But.
Or is that just?
That's not a- that's not a one-for-one. The- the money we get from the state does not go just to the schools, right? It's the revenue for the city or a dependent school district. We're not independent. So, it's not as simple as that statement.
Right. And that's where my confusion is.
And so I think that's, and then thank you, Mr. Donovan, for the step. And that's a great question, because I think people are gonna assume that the twelve million dollars are just gonna come to the school.
Right.
And so, you know.
Could be really nice. I would like that.
Fantastic. But I wanted to be careful with that, too. So even if we got the twelve million dollars, I think as a- as a school community, as a board of education, we still have to have conversations on what's our priority?
Right, I don't disagree. I was just curious if, like, how that impacted. I- I just don't understand the intersection between the state formula changes that happened, like, at the state level, and how that intersects with what the mayor's saying are increases as a beholden school district. Like, I just don't- I'm sorry, I'm sounding kind of like an idiot here, but I just don't understand it, so.
Well, great question, because I think that's gonna be.
That's part of budget.
Yes, yep. Um, and I think that's, again, a conversation with the city on, as Mr. Donovan kind of said, how are they using that revenue? You know, are they using it just to lower taxes and we're not getting a four percent increase?
I mean, I don't know how much goes to, like, benefits and stuff, too, because a lot of times when we talk budget, we're not talking about benefits. I just, um, wanted to put the bug in our ear while my brain was short-circuiting to maybe go into that a little bit deeper during budget, so that, I don't know if you can make me understand it, but I- I would appreciate some effort. Thank you.
So again, um, just here, again, this is raw numbers. And so just, again, what- what's the FTEs? And really to have the conversation, where are we investing in our- in our FTEs, kind of moving forward? Yep.
I was just wondering, um, if all the employees of the school district are here, like, the, um, you know, the, um, the custodians, the cafeteria staff, the, um, like, the, um, admin?
It's everyone, Dan, right?
Correct, that's everybody.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No, no, no. Up here, you mean?
Yes, I didn't know if these were.
No, these are just- these are teachers.
Just teachers.
Teachers in the teachers' union, so it includes, um.
People that work directly with kids.
Teachers, people in the teachers' union. So it's not just, you know, it- it includes all the- the teachers in the teachers' union.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Not administrators, not, yeah, not affiliates. So, again, I just wanted a broad context of where we're, um, some history, some of the conversations. And really, the meet tonight is, you know, what is our middle school philosophy? So, um, we've been doing a lot of work around the middle school, uh, philosophy with the steering committee. And, um, I have three people who volunteered to talk a little bit of that work. So if, um, Danine, Lynn, and Kim can approach and introduce yourselves and give us a little background.
Let's rip that down. Hi, my name is Lynn Rowe. I live at twenty-three Burgess Street in Nashua. I'm a sixth-grade middle school teacher at FMS, and my three children went through Nashua School District from kindergarten, and all three graduated from North. Uh, I've been on the Middle School Steering Committee since two thousand and ten. And I have to say, we've accomplished more in the last year and a half than we have in the past fourteen years. Dr. Andre and Mr. Poska dove headfirst into establishing our beliefs and values as middle schools and got a quick pulse on where everybody stood on the committee. They created a safe environment to have very hard conversations where we could argue, disagree, and still be respectful and productive. We had meetings sometimes until five-thirty, six o'clock, so that everyone who wanted to speak could and did. In the end, I feel like I'm hovering over this. In the end, we took votes on various issues surrounding the middle schools, sometimes more than once because of clarification issues. The majority won, whichever way that went. Luckily, it went in the favor of aligning more with middle school philosophy, which has been in existence since the nineteen nineties, when adolescents were studied as separate from high schoolers and not quite elementary students either. They truly are unique and need to be treated as such. I could talk for hours on the middle schools, my experiences, and its philosophy, but I'll save you all that tonight. If anyone is interested in learning more about this, just read Amelie's, "The Association for Middle-Level Education: The Successful Middle School: This We Believe", and you will understand what I'm talking about. It always bothered me that we changed our junior high school signs to middle schools, but did not change our practices. I, for one, am so happy to be part of finally being able to make some changes and moving forward instead of staying stagnant and stuck in the past. Just because we've always done it one way does not mean that's the best way. Please pay attention to the Middle School Steering Committee, because every person there is in this for the kids, and that's what's important. Please email me if you have any questions about this. I'm always willing to discuss the middle school philosophy and practices that I've seen work firsthand in my thirty-plus years of teaching. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Danine Robey, and this is my twenty-fourth year working at Nashua School District. I'm an eighth-grade social studies teacher at Elm Street Middle School and the curriculum liaison there. I've served on the Middle School Steering Committee along with Lynn for the same amount of time since two thousand and ten. Anyone who has served on that committee at any time during those years, for longer than the last year and a half, will tell you that although we created many plans and did much research, uh, the movement forward was little due to change of administration or other priorities. This brings me to the last year and a half with the leadership of Dr. Andre and Mr. Poska. They asked for people to volunteer for the work. A few of us still stepped up. To prepare, teachers and administrators read books, discussed articles, looked at data. We created a list of beliefs. There were long discussions on what the collective experience would be for all of our students across middle schools. I want to say out loud that from the research of past middle school steering committees and this one, we all want our students to know they belong. Our goal is to create a middle school community where all students feel valued, wanted, and welcomed. Based on our beliefs of the middle school experience, we see a schedule based around the importance of interdisciplinary teaming, flexible grouping, and a curriculum based on creative exploration and experimentation of subject matter for all students. During these meetings, people had different ideas of how we would get to that goal, but everyone was heard. I say, I see that we have created a foundation of what the rest of the work will be, and there is a lot of work to be done in little time, as we're reminded. There were pretty much three outcomes that happened in the last year. The middle school-level policy, ELA recommendation, and reduction of period transitions for students. Again, not everyone agreed on the decisions, but as professionals, we made informed decisions and voted prior to and independent of the boundary decision that was made here. We have accomplished a baseline of decisions about what our students' collective experience will be, which creates a foundation of the rest of the work that needs to be done. You have cha- voted to change the middle school-level policy to more reflect our middle school philosophy, which should be commended. Thank you. We heard from the ELA Steering Committee and made an informed decision based on a recommendation from those teachers, which I believe you will hear from, who did the work and showed us the data. In addition, this allowed the ability to go to six-period to four-core teacher schedule based on teaming. Think of it this way. Imagine, in your job, going to nine, possibly ten, meetings a day with that many different bosses, with that many different expectations. This is what our middle school students currently do. To lessen the transitions for students will help with student engagement and in turn, help with student accountability. We are not done, but we have made, as Lynn said, more forward movement in this past year on what we want that common experience to be than in the past ten. Yet, there's so much more work to do. I encourage you to pay attention to the middle school needs and to take the recommendations of the Middle School Steering Committee to do what is best for all of the middle school students in Nashua. I would be remiss if I didn't say that I am beyond concerned that we will not be able to give our students that common experience and allow all students access without looking more closely at some of the numbers you will see tonight. I'm gonna save my comments on that until after we hear the presentation. But I will end here by saying that I am happy that we are moving forward and hoping for the board's support for all the middle school students in Nashua. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kim Elliott, and I'm a reading specialist and the curriculum liaison for the English Department of Fairgrounds Middle School. I serve on middle school steering and ELA steering. I'm a newer member to middle school steering, joining when we started a year and a half ago. I knew we had a lot of work in front of us with about a year and a half at that point before we bring a new school online. Um, we are in the midst of many changes, but it's not the first time our district has undertaken significant changes as part of a restructuring process. Our current process reminds me of when I began at Nashville High School in nineteen ninety-seven. We were planning a huge restructuring then as we prepared to open a new high school, the building we're standing in now. Teachers were involved in planning the physical buildings. I remember meetings where we looked at blueprints and gave feedback. And at the same time, we were undergoing significant curriculum changes. The largest of which was to embed and expand the CTE programs within the two high schools. I'd say those efforts have stood the test of time. We did not want to enter new buildings with old ideas and practices, even though we knew it meant big adjustments for many staff involved. I'm proud to contribute once again to a process that aims to provide a robust, challenging, and developmentally-appropriate educational experience for all middle school students. Similar to what you've heard Lynn and Danine say, I can attest that middle school steering has been a genuine process. This last year and a half, I have taken part and witnessed many discussions that were heartfelt, vulnerable, and pushed all of us to examine what we believe is best for middle school students. Never was there a thought that we were just going through motions. I've been on committees before where we felt like leadership might know how they wanted things to turn out. This was not that. It's well documented that our first recommendation was the middle school policy. Our second recommendation has been, uh, to adopt the recommendations of the ELA Steering Committee, which you'll hear from later. These two decision points encompassed most of our meeting and discussion time through vigorous debate and discussion. Knowing each decision has a ripple effect, some that we could not fully predict, including the recent board decision to change the boundary limit, we kept what is best for kids at the forefront of the discussion with the goal of making recommendations that would, again, stand the test of time. Although newer board members may now just be hearing about this long story of becoming true middle schools, and indeed, the entire board can't be involved every step along the way, please know that, over the years, many dedicated professionals have poured hours of time, expertise, and heart into this process in the service of our students. Thank you.
You.
Any questions for the three of them, for the Middle School Steering Committee? Yeah, no.
Any questions?
So I just wanna kind of reiterate on, um, what I heard and I think what we've been talking over the last eighteen months. We really spent a lot of time on our belief system. So there are things around, um, challenges. But as Lynn just said, what's sustainable is our collective beliefs. What do- what's our shared values, our- our- our shared mission, our sha- shared values? That's sustainable. Things can come and go, um, but together, we know from John Hattie's work that one of the top two, top three indicators of student achievement is teachers' collective efficacy. What is our belief system? And if we believe kids can, are we doing whatever it takes to make it happen? And so, that's where we really spent a lot of time talking about, if we believe all kids can, do our policies reflect that? Does our schedule reflect that? Does our curriculum reflect that? And sometimes those are harder decisions to have and conversations to have, as opposed to, it's low student achievement, what are we gonna do? So, we spent a lot of time looking in the. So we spent a lot of time looking in the mirror, and it was really heartfelt. It was a lot of long kind of conversations where I think everybody had a voice. And I really appreciate that work. It's been a lot of, a lot of years coming, and now we're at that point, and I think we're at the opportune time. We're not done. I think there's about 15 more. I keep on looking at you guys. But really, because you are the leadership in this committee, I think we have 15 more kind of conversations between grading, discipline, school climate, even just the scheduling. We talked about opportunities for, you know, middle school band and foreign language classes. I'll throw it out there, and we haven't discussed it, but it's like, should they be full-year classes? Or can that be altered to provide more opportunities? Again, I think we just have to rethink opportunities. I don't want people emailing me saying we're changing the foreign language or band right now. But I think we need to have kind of conversations, what does a middle school's experience look like? But right now, we're really tackling our belief systems. And that's hotter kind of conversations. And we heard about some of the challenges that are coming up that are more technical. All right, when am I moving? When am I packing my classrooms? Who's making this decision? You know, are we going to have four-person teams or five-person teams? We can have that conversation. I mean, I can dictate it, I could direct it. But at the end of the day, it really comes down, what is the opportunities for students? What does teaching and learning look like in a four-person team versus a five-person team? A six-period day versus a seven-period day? If we keep on just tweaking the edges and not talk about, what is high-quality instruction, high-quality assessments, deeper learning? Then nothing really changes. So those are the harder conversations that we're starting to have that is transformative. And it comes from teacher leadership. It comes from student voice. What are those experiences? So the work is, even though we're 18 months into it, the work has really just begun. And these are some of the early decisions that are coming out of this Steering Committee. So speaking about, yep, sorry.
I just have a question. Like, you said that we have to know the pluses and minuses. I mean, I don't know the pluses and minuses. Are we going to be told? Are we going to be given any of that information, or?
Yep, so we're going to turn it over to the middle school principals, and they're going to talk about some of the impact of four-person teams and six-period days.
All right, thank you.
Great segue. I paid you $5 before.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Coffey. I'm the principal of Fairgrounds Middle School. This is my 47th year in the Nashville School District. And 37 years of this, my, as an educator, have been at the junior high and the middle school level. So that's a big passion of mine. One of the things we talk about is consistency. A good thing about this is that, right now, we're very inconsistent. We're inconsistent within our schools. We're inconsistent comparing all the three schools together. So I think by having the four-person teams, everybody has six periods, it's consistent across the board for everybody. And schools today are responsible for providing students with so many things: challenging curriculum, effective instruction, and meeting students' social, emotional needs. And I'm really strong, have strong feelings about giving them more time with the teachers, the teachers and the students giving them more, having more time. I do, you know, hundreds of observations during the years. And, you know, I go into the classroom, and this 48 minutes just doesn't provide enough time for the students. You know, you should see a good lesson, you start with a warm-up and reviewing what has been done in the previous lessons and in order to get them going for what's going to be presented to them. And then, you know, you have the instruction, and then you have an activity, and then you have a wrap-up. Well, it just goes by so fast, and they don't get all these things done. You know, and sometimes the kids just start, and it's like, okay, well, good, you look like you're going good now. Now we'll have to wait till tomorrow. And so this way, you're going to be able to get a lot more done during the period. And there's also, you know, there's different students' needs that need to be met. This way, while you can get this group working and then take a couple of these other kids who seem a little confused, okay, you guys come over and sit over here with me, and we'll, you know, we'll work with you privately or separately. And I just think it's going to provide much more opportunities for both the students and the teachers, and help the students be a lot more successful.
Hi, I'm Gabe Falsrannell. I'm the principal of Penetech Middle School. Prior to coming up, I was wondering which bullet I would have, hoping fewer transitions. And I think I did some quick math. By transitioning down to six periods, we're cutting off about 14.5% of the students' transitioning time, which is enormous. So I loved something that came up in multiple meetings, and then it even came up tonight about having fewer bosses. And I've never really considered a teacher as a boss, per se, but I get it when it comes up in the context of, you're going now from fifth grade, where you could possibly have one, two teachers a day, and then maybe a third with a special, to seven different people, seven different ways of teaching. Even though we're in a team model, every teacher is independent of themselves in how they get the information across. So cutting down on the transitions is not only the physical transitions, but the pedagogical transitions between how someone is teaching and how someone is taking in that information. The fewer transitions is fantastic for the fifth graders. Again, transitioning to sixth grade, again, they're going from one classroom a day, sometimes two, to now seven. Pairing that down to six, again, is a 14.5% difference. It is huge. Even though, when you look at a sixth grader and then you compare them, juxtapose them against an eighth grader, and they're vastly different, eighth graders still aren't quite there yet. And still, having seven periods is taxing on the day. Six periods, as Sharon said, brings in extra minutes into the classroom, but it's more aligned with the high school. So if you look at the bookends, you have fifth graders now, they don't know quite yet, but they're going to have one less transition in their day, more time with the teacher, more time to get that information. And a seventh grader, or rather, an eighth grader transitioning into ninth grade, they're going to go from six periods down to four. Right now, they're going from seven periods down to four. That's enormous. Not only is that, but, again, Sharon said, it's about 48 minutes a class. They come up to the high school, and it's now approximately 90 minutes. You're doubling the time. We're transitioning to a 60-minute period. Again, it's not quite 90 minutes, but it still builds that capacity with the students. So the fewer transitions, really, on the bookends, are going to be fantastic for the kids. And those seventh graders are going to get right in that nice sweet spot in the middle of the year so they can really get in. That's the time where they get a lot of that information that they need. So I'm going to pass it off to Katrina. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katrina Sparza, and I am the principal at Elm Street. I think, for me, there's a big piece of hopefulness when it comes to a new schedule and moving into also the new building. And it comes with being able to provide those equitable experiences for all of our students. And when I look at the display of students that we have at every building, we have so many students who need enrichment, and we have so many students who need support, and that looks different for everyone. To be able to give them that experience of not only being included but feeling like they belong is one of the things that's very, very important to me. So as a team, we have been working together to figure out, how do we increase, you know, the academic inclusion and belonging for all students? But also, when we're talking about our unified arts programs and our foreign language programs, making sure that all of our students have access to that. And the schedules that we have right now do not provide access to all of our students because it's been happening the way that it's been happening for so long that we've created corners that don't allow certain special ed programs to meet at certain times, or don't allow EL students to do certain programmings. And because those are happening, we're keeping students, we're keeping people from becoming culinary masters. We're keeping people from learning that they love the STEM programs. And those are the pieces that we want to make sure that they have and that they understand as they're moving towards the high school. So to create those equitable experiences, we do have to redefine the schedule. And I think part of the best part of the technical piece is that it's a little more computerized than we've realized. And we are able to say, what would happen if? And ask the computer to give us that run to say, what happens if we run multiple grade levels at lunches? What happens if we do this? What happens if we don't run these together? What happens if we put two UAs next to each other? And be able to determine for the building of children that are in front of us in real time, what is going to be the best experience for every student? And that, again, that's a heavy lift, but at the same time, that's a lift that you do every year because your children change every year. And ultimately, you want your children to become the people who have met your high expectations. So you should be raising the bar for them and raising it again the following year. So in terms of, do we know what the schedule looks like? Not yet. But we are going to be able to make it consistent for our students so that they have the same experience across our schools. We do have transient students, and I think sometimes they ping-pong between us. I could think of at least a couple of faces that I've seen three or four times because we need to do what we need to do for our families. But leaving Penetech doesn't mean you have a different experience at Elm Street. It shouldn't. And those are some of the other pieces that we need to ensure for our students. So that way, when they go to the high schools, whichever high school they go to, they've had that consistency and that understanding of who they are and who they want to be as learners.
Can someone write down what a student experience would look like between a seven-period day and a six-period day? And what stays the same, what's different?
Okay, so they're going to be taking English, Math, Science, and Social Studies?
Just get closer. That's all.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. They're going to be taking English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. Everybody is. And then they're going to be having two UAs a day. Now, these UAs, what we're trying to do is in sixth and seventh grade, have them take the basic UAs. By the time they get out of seventh grade, they've had one experience in art, one experience in music, one experience in PE, then facts, tech health, and computers. So we're trying to make sure that they all have that. So then, when they get to the eighth grade, if they don't have them, at least they're leaving middle school with that background. And that's, the state recommendations are that they at least have experience in one of those. And the fact that we are on trimesters, they take a UA every trimester. So you can very easily go to the sixth grade and gone through every single one of them by the end of sixth grade. Okay? So, and then we're also offering in seventh and eighth grade the world language. Many years, the world language has been done in eighth grade only. But this year, we're doing it, bringing it to UA section. We're able to offer it to some seventh graders if they'd like it as well. They also, they can take, you know, they can take music. They can take band, which, there's general music, and there's band and chorus, and there's also guitar and keyboarding. So by eighth grade, they can, you know, if they've had the four, the basic UAs, by eighth grade, then they can take the keyboard and the guitar and the other, and like, this high school art they offer. So they can take these different electives as well. So I think it gives the students much more experience.
Can someone, I know the answer, but can someone explain, like, why it says literacy, writing, ELA, reading, or foreign language as part of a five-person team?
Okay, well, I can, I've been around the longest. So back in the day, when we first, we transitioned from junior highs to middle school, it was felt that we kind of needed, to be honest with you, we kind of needed a filler. And so they said, okay. So they thought that literacy might be, they wanted, so they needed filler for sixth and seventh grade because they knew in eighth grade, the world language would make the fifth one. So let's, well, let's make them all five. So they decided that literacy might be good for seventh grade. That way, the students would get more experience in informational texts. And that's what literacy is. It's informational text. And it's really to teach the student how to deal with nonfiction information and then integrated, it should be integrated into the other subject areas as well: science and social studies, all the other subject matter. So that was the basis of that. And then in writing, that kind of came from the elementary schools because in the elementary school, they do spend a lot of time on ELA a good part of their day. So they think, okay, well, then we'll, we'll give them, we could call it, we won't call it English, we'll break it off. We'll go with the reading part of English, and then we'll have the writing part of English. So they felt as though that kind of gave them that 90 minutes in sixth grade that they had in elementary school.
Thanks. I just, the reason why I brought it up because when you see five-person teams across the different schools and in different grade levels, it could be a foreign language person tied to that team, or it could be a literacy focus, or it's not consistent on what a five-person team is, more of that aspect. And I, and I just want to be also clear. It's, I don't think it was a filler. There was always high instruction going on, I think. So I just, I don't want to, like, downplay it, but again, I think there was always best intentions on how do we maximize opportunities for kids. But it's just when we talk about four-person teams and five-person teams, they're not consistent within the building or between the building. So Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. Do any of the other districts in our area or other, I guess it's only two districts that are close to our size, do any of them offer the literacy, the reading, the writing in middle school? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm anticipating.
Another $5 well spent.
So I have a question. Are we saying that our kids no longer need this individual time, that 90 minutes that was allotted for them to learn these specialties because they were not testing well and doing all that? When, I believe that when this 90-minute block was added to the schedule, it was because there was a need for more learning, more specialized instruction. I just, if you could correct that for me.
It's not specialized instruction. It was, it's more integrated, okay?
Sorry, or separated. It was separated, my understanding, and that's why I'm asking you because I know that you've been with the district for a very long time, wasn't that time, that 90 minutes given into the schedule at that time because people needed individual instruction on literacy, on writing, on reading, on fluency, and we still, as a district, need that?
Right, but what I'm talking about when you talk about the literacy and writing, that's not specialized instruction at all. Okay, we still also have, if a student needs more, we have reading interventionists, we have math interventionists, so we can even give them more time. Okay, so it's not 90 minutes. It was an additional, I mean, each period right now is 48 minutes. Okay? So we're, now we're bumping it up to 58, 60 minutes. So we're giving them more, but we also still are going to have the reading specialist who does the reading intervention and the math intervention. And besides, through the IEPs, students also receive additional instruction there as well. So we're not taking anything away. Okay? And it's, like, we're infusing, for example, what's learned in literacy and what's learned in writing. We're infusing that more across the board in the other subject areas.
Ms. Raymond? Thank you. Can you speak more about the impact or potential ideas for band and chorus? I mean, I, as many of you guys know, my youngest is in eighth grade, and it's selecting courses for High School Week. And she's been in band since whatever grade you start, fifth grade. And this year, she takes band and a language and UAs. And she finally, by the way, next trimester gets art for the first time in the three years that she's been because she consistently gets gym. And we had to really fight to get her into art, and I'm excited about it. But I'm worried because, as we're discussing as a family, what to do next year, her preference is to drop music. She won't be taking band because she very much wants to make sure that she gets calculus. It's like a big thing. That's great, each kid is unique. But to me, it makes me very sad. And I worry significantly about us, kind of, we've kind of outsourced a little bit of band in the elementary schools, and I'm worried that we're going to outsource it. In the high school, is it like an AB day? Like, how does, is there a way to make that work? Or like, what are the discussions about trying to maintain the excellence that we have in our music departments? Because I think they're really important.
Oh, I'm in band right now, and it's on an AB schedule. So if you're going into freshman year, you're going to go to band one day, and then you're going to go to, at least at South, you go to English the next day. Sophomore year, you do band one day, and then health and sophomore gym the other day. And then junior year, it's going to be band one day, and then US history the other day. And then junior year, it's going to be band one day and then US history the other day. And then senior year, you get mod block. Basically a free period.
It's a learning experience.
So I think to answer your question, in like, it's a technical thing, right? But let's say you have a sixth grader come in, first thing right down the line. We're on the four-person team schedule. We start trimester one with band and we hate it. Why can't we do it only for a trimester so that way they can have another opportunity to move on? So maybe it's not thinking of it in terms of like, one year you're locked in. Maybe it's then giving them, so it's a trimester, trimester, trimester. It's still a year. But it also then, if there's another class that runs during period five and I know you need to take gym because you haven't had it, maybe then your band moves to period six, but period five, you can do gym. So this way, we're being a little bit more flexible in our thinking and our scheduling so that we can move capacity for students. So they can do it for a year if that's, you know, like, if that's, if that's where your heart is, it could be done. But at the same time, to be able to then give you those flex pieces of like, I want to do it, but, or maybe we get halfway through and we decide that we kind of don't want to, like, you know, like, they're children, they change. So that opportunity is there to create for them so that it meets their needs instead of just kind of pinning them to a decision that was made in September and now it's June and we really now don't like clarinet at all, where maybe if we had stopped at that first point, we could have saved our love for music.
I think that follows along with the consistency because, you know, that we're working, we're working, the three of us are working together, three schools. I mean, if your daughter didn't take, just taking art now, the way we're proposing it, she'll get her art if she were starting over again. She'd get her art in sixth grade, okay? And then there wouldn't have to be that worry. And also too, another thing is that we at Fairgrounds, another way of consistency, we at Fairgrounds, if a student doesn't like the band, and so at the end of the first trimester, they come to the guidance, they, I, I want out of band, we, okay, that's fine, get out of band. We allow them out and we allow them to take, we find other UAs for them to take. So I think, you know, that's where consistency and flexibility come in.
Ms. Gillio and then Ms. Lane Fear, sorry.
I just have a little question about, about the UA. So if you have, when they move into seventh grade and eighth grade and they're going to start world language, that leaves them with one UA period day. And what if, what if this person has been playing an instrument, wants to continue in band all three trimesters? But what if they also sing? Do they have the option to be in chorus as well? How does that work out?
Yes, so band and chorus students currently, if they want both, they will alternate days. At least at Penachuk, they alternate days. My assumption is Fairgrounds, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And for, for the language piece, just for clarity, we are currently, at Penachuk, we have our languages in the Unified Arts. We've had them for the past several years. Seventh grade is not a full year of language, it's a trimester of language. Eighth grade year, however, is a full year because it is a credited, high school credited course. It also allowed for some more equity in the language at the eighth grade level because the way that it had been done, when I entered the building five years ago, was you were recommended based on previous years' English Language Arts grades. And there wasn't an opportunity to even try. You were recommended by the teacher, and that's the only way you got in. Now, starting in seventh grade, we have a little bit of a touch of it in sixth grade too. But starting in seventh grade, you can have an opportunity for both Spanish and French because they are trimester-long courses. You can dabble in both. And then when you get to eighth grade, you could find that you don't like either of the languages and move on, or you love them, and it becomes a quandary on whether or not you get both French and Spanish, but I'm not sure that's going to happen. But that's way down the line. There's a lot to discuss because of the confines of our old schedule. But the broadening what we have and the openness to it, it's going to be Sharon and Katrina and I really thinking about different ways to look at how to offer UA comparatively speaking.
Lane Fear?
My question was about foreign languages too. If it's a trimester course, does that mean you have teachers teaching the very beginning of each language for, during every semester?
We haven't had a chance yet to sit down and talk with the world language department.
Yeah, because that, that seems important because if it's a trimester class and you're saying kids can switch out and go to a different language, or, I mean, if there's no one that's teaching the elementary, like, the first vocabulary words and stuff, how will they get into it?
We, right now, for example, we have, it's only offered at the eighth grade. So they have French, Spanish, and those are for credit, those are high school courses. They follow the same curriculum and the same grading as the high school. Then we have exploring world languages. And so that's where they take a little bit of Spanish, a little bit of French, and a little bit of German. And because those are the courses that they're going to be taking, they're going to be offered at the high school. So it's an exploratory time. They're not, the thing is, we're at, except for the eighth grade, we're not going to be working on credits. All right, so there's, you know, it's just, gives the, an exposure to it. And then what, this talking, you know, to, I know in my exploratory, talking to most teachers, they do, they just give the, in my observations, they do, they just start the very basic things, like, are they learning the word for house? And they were learning animals, and the teacher had stuffed animals and they were all, you know, learning the names of them and so forth.
Yeah, so, so right now, all the, all the languages in all of the elementary and all of the middle schools, they start in September and the curriculum goes right through to the end of the year?
Right now, yes, it's in the eighth grade.
Is that the same in Penachuk?
No. So I moved, I moved the, three years ago, moved the languages, the world languages into the Unified Arts. I worked with the superintendent, assistant superintendent at the time to pilot that. It's worked very well, and it's what I hope to bring to the table for Katrina and for Sharon when we sit down and ultimately talk about what it looks like in seventh grade, so.
How does, yeah, how does it work?
In seventh grade, again, it's a trimester course and they do some, some of the introductory pieces that you can do over 60 days. It helps them move a little bit quicker at that quicker pace when they get to eighth grade. So many of the students will transition, even if they've taken it trimester one in their seventh grade year, they still have those rudimentary pieces of, what are their name, what's their name, colors, days of the week, numbers. I'm sure there are much more than that. And they have a nice jumping off point. Because, again, that's a high school-level course in the eighth grade, they are moving fast. Even though it's, even though it's 180 days as opposed to the 90 at the high school, they are still moving at the same pace with a lesser time. And some, in to some regard, they have to move a little bit faster because they have to build those skills very quickly. Some of the kids at the high school had had it in their eighth grade year, they were able to jump a little bit faster, so.
So, so for the three trimesters of seventh grade, all of the languages that are taught are just the basic elementary, you know, beginning stages?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. So how many teachers do we have just teaching that? Is there only one teacher? Is there three teachers?
At Penachuk, there's one Spanish teacher, one French teacher.
Same thing.
Same.
Okay, all right, thank you, thanks.
And just to clarify, because I, I think one of the things that we're missing is the high school-level classes. So the, the foreign language classes in the eighth grade are following, not the trimester, they follow the quarters. Somebody wrote me that.
Correct, yes, yes.
But also.
In the same pacing.
Right, but also, I mean, the, at the high school, you take Spanish, whatever, one in half a year, but 90-minute classes. But at the middle school, you're taking it a full year, but only 45-minute classes. So it's the same, it's really the same pacing for the number of minutes that you're in front of your teacher.
Ren?
I have a question about special education services. With this new model, if a student needs to be pulled out for services, when would that happen?
It varies. For example, if a student needs specialized math, right now, we try to schedule it at the same time as the other students on their team would have their math, okay? So you're opposite that. There's also time, we have what's called advisory time. This is the first 20 minutes of the day instead of homeroom. We start off, at Fairgrounds anyway, we start off at homeroom for beginning of the year for like two weeks, and then we break it down into advisory. There's, there's many more advisories than there are homerooms. And so the student can go during that time if they need to and, and work with a special ed teacher. So we make it, we make it work, okay?
What about things like speech therapy? I mean, I'm thinking of kids that need pull-out services.
Yeah, we also have, right, we have what's called tutorial time. And it's like a guided study hall for our special ed students. Many of them, and so lots of times, they'll come out of that tutorial time to take the speech services.
That was my question, where will that be in this six-period day? Because now you don't have time.
Right, well, we would do that, the tutorial time would be similar to the chorus and band, okay? During the UA time, or, yeah.
So instead of taking chorus, band, and all that, they would have to have their special education services at that UA time?
For tutorial, just for tutorial, that's maybe where they receive the extra help.
So then how would they get the Spanish, French, German?
Not all, not all special education students take a tutorial or take a tutorial during the UA time. So they're limited due, that's where their goals, their goals are met. Many special ed students are getting, I'm not going to say many. Some special ed students are getting push-in services in the traditional classroom. So a special educator will go into that class, not, albeit, it's not every day that they're in that class, but they're in there several days a week. And so that's where they're receiving some of their goal-setting services.
Will that, that special ed model continue with this? Because it, it will be a push-in service for a whole class?
We're still working on that piece.
Okay.
I think.
It's a work in progress.
The hardest part to answer that question is that everybody's individualized IEP is really on that level where it is personalized to that student. So we have to look at everybody's roster and figure out what that looks like. Part of what we're trying to accomplish by looking to be flexible and create these new opportunities for students. And I could think about my building where I have bridges, right? We have the program where we have the children on the spectrum of autism. Some of those students cannot be in a class of their grade-level peers for art because their schedule does not align right now with that grade level. So you may have an eighth grader who is in with a sixth grader. And that for them is, it's unfair. It feels, it feels childish to them because they're an eighth grader and now we have sixth graders. We're also not seeing peer-like behavior in that class because our eighth graders act very differently than our sixth graders do. So to learn to be able to flex and mold for them as well so that they have that equitable experience. There's no reason why right now, then, and again, does it happen right now? Yeah, can we fix that? Yes, and it goes into our EL population as well. You should be with your peers. And those, those, again, take, those are nuances that we have to sit down and really, like, fine-tune.
And that's my question, going into this new thing, in 63 days, do we have a plan for the special education curriculum? We do?
We've been working on it. Yeah, this is, there's not a day I don't come in and don't, especially like, you know, being, being the one who's like, working towards the McCarthy and having a clean slate. I work closely with EL, special ed. I mean, I know, I know more people in this district than I knew in any of my previous districts because we are working very closely to make sure that every student is getting what they need for that first day and that the teachers are able to support them and know what's coming out of that gate.
Okay, and then my last question for anybody was, what is covered in the UAs as a whole? So.
First of all, I just, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, none of these changes are meant to shortchange the students in any way. We're trying to increase our time in our services with the students. And, you know, we recognize that there are gaps we got to fill in, we have to be more on the same page with each other, but it's definitely, it's to meet the best needs of the students. And I'm sorry, right, so, for example, we have art, music, phys ed, FACS, which is, back in the day, was cooking and sewing, okay? Tech ed, which back in the day was building houses and electricity and so forth. Now a lot of robotics, computers, a lot of computerized is brought into that, and then computers themselves. And also, in seventh grade, it's been a tradition in Nashua to give all the seventh graders a course in health, so they take a trimester of health in seventh grade. So does that answer your question? I didn't know if I went deep enough into that.
Mary has had a question.
So I have two brothers at Elm Street right now, and they're in band for the full year. And they're also taking Spanish, like I took Spanish in eighth grade, and that's a full-year course. So based on this, I realized, you talked about the guidelines with the other UAs, like gym and health and all of that, and tech ed. How do they get that if band and or Spanish take up those, oh, it's not there anymore, but if they take up those two UAs, how do they get those other things that you said are guidelines per the state?
Assuming they have received them during the sixth and seventh grade year. But I know sometimes that does happen, we've had that happen at Fairgrounds. So we've, you know, we've had to say to the student, okay, well, you know, you, you need this service, you need this, it might be specialized service. You need this, okay? So you'll have to drop out of band or chorus for that trimest, and then we'll put you back in for the next trimest.
Okay.
Okay, again, we're not trying to shortchange anybody.
Okay.
So if I might, a couple of things that I heard here, just to reinforce, and Katrina said it multiple times, is really the flexibility for the students, right? And just, again, I think the schedule and system has been created over time and changes is, takes time. But what we saw at the, in the high schools, a perfect experience around how do we keep students engaged, whether it's in music or chorus, and they came up with the skinny periods, right? And so like, they haven't been the full year, and they modify those periods so they can have something on the other side. We're not there yet, but as Katrina said right at the beginning, is how do we create a schedule that meets the students' needs? And that might mean tweaks every year based on student interest, not based on adult interest. And so that's difficult. I mean, and I don't want to say the adult being disparaging, right? Like, it's just, but that's one of those aspects on, sometimes we have conversations based on the, the number of teachers' interests or, or how, as Katrina said, the schedule has been built for a number of years. We know this period always is going to offset this class. So that's going to be a lot more work on the, the middle school administrators, guidance counselors, really getting to the student interest. And I think that's the transformational aspect of it too, as we talked about with the steering committee. If we believe, we have our belief statements, do our practices match it? If we say where we want, you know, a gateway, 10,000 gateways for every student, and a gateway to opportunity, are we creating those opportunities in our schedules? And so that might be dependent on when do we get to know the students and how is that schedule built? And again, I think I used the skinny periods, came out of, were we losing band students and music or chorus, chorus students because it was only half a year and the response came back, we want kids practicing every day, how might we be creative with our schedule? We're not there yet, but I can see us in a year saying, how might we be creative in the six-period day? Having conversations with our foreign language teachers, our music teachers, and what could be an offset of what those experiences look like. So that was one thing about really the flexibility around students. And then Sharon opened it up at the beginning around the longer, and back to Reagan's question, what's different? Is we're hoping that there's deeper learning going on in the classroom. There's more time on task for student engagement, student empowerment, student agency. So how might we create opportunities for students to have voice and choice within those periods? So I think that's a bigger aspect of the change. And even, it's only 12 minutes, but that's 12 more minutes of students to have productive struggle in their classrooms, opportunities for teachers to scaffold, differentiate, and make sure our students are being successful.
That leads me to my next question, which is, can we talk a little bit about the difference between a five-person and a four-person team as far as the workload for the teachers and what kind of, what kind of experience they'll be able to provide to their, to their students? How will that be different?
So we're going to transition to the ELA Steering Committee, and they're going to talk about.
Oh, they're the ones that are.
I'm down like $15 tonight.
All right.
So. So from the ELA Steering Committee, Carrie Burns, Mike Allen, and Bobby Flanagan.
All right, Carrie Burns, I'm the instructional coach for English Language Arts for the middle schools. And I've told Mr. Allen and Ms. Flanagan to interrupt at any time because I'm kind of giving an overview of the work that we did in ELA steering. So they may jump in, and I know they have their own things to say too. It was probably around this time last year that we started talking about needing to form, reform the ELA Steering Committee. And we had representation from every grade level, level at every school as a part of the committee. And I have the privilege of facilitating this meeting where our goal was to make a recommendation for the middle school ELA course of studies. Not, not a, a small task at all, a very huge task. And one of the reasons that we needed to make this recommendation comes from the inconsistencies in our classes. And we have talked about, the principals just talked about needing to be more consistent. Our ELA courses, last year at this time and still now, vary across the three schools and within the schools. At one school, you have one course in grade six, two courses in grade seven, and two courses in grade eight. At another school, you have two courses in grade six, two courses in grade seven, and one course in grade eight. And in another school, you have one or two courses in grade six, two courses in grade seven, one course in grade eight. So I think it's Mr. Poska that always says, the one thing that we are doing consistently is being inconsistent. So we, we had a very big, big task at hand. And so we started, we reviewed the research. We read several articles prior to having our meeting. And many of us had been a part of our partnership with the Teaching Learning Alliance where we, we had also been reading and researching throughout the school year as well. And the research showed us that an integrated ELA approach is what we needed. Not a separated approach that we had been doing. We did, Ms. Raymond, look at surrounding schools, and I would be happy to pass this around after I read from it, too. We looked at Amherst, Dover, Hudson, London Dairy, Manchester, Merrimack, Milford, and Lowell even. And at only one of those school districts do they have two courses in the middle school in language arts. And that was broken into a literature and composition course, which I like to think is maybe somewhat close to what we were doing in some of our sixth grades. But that, yeah, here, pass that around if you'd like to see it. So out of those eight surrounding schools, only one was separating language arts. And if you include us, that makes nine. We also reviewed our SAS data, and we saw that our scores have been trending down prior to COVID. So yep, COVID's in the mix, but we already had a trend down prior to it. And I also have that, but I can pass around. So we did a, kind of a little gallery walk on all of these different things. You can see some of the teachers' comments on this, along with, it's really itty-bitty, the SAS data, but you can see it there. The same, we also looked at our IREDDI data. And we, one thing that we noticed and commented on was that our literature scores were higher than our informational test, text scores, and that was across all schools, all grade levels, except there was one exception, if I recall, last spring. And we also looked at the standards. And if we are committed to the standards, and we take a look at them very closely, I'm gonna quote from them, "Because the ELA classroom must focus on literature, including stories, drama, and poetry, as well as literary nonfiction, a great deal of informational reading in grade six to 12 must take place in other classes." We, we looked at that a very long time. We discussed that a lot. And it was not an easy conversation because we looked at the courses that we have, and, oh yes, just as an aside, the literacy classes have exceptional teachers and have been doing exceptional work over the years. Just wanna put that out there. But what we're, what we really found when we looked at all of this data and we reviewed everything is that what, what the standards and best practices were showing us was that we weren't doing what we needed to be doing. And it took a lot of discussion. We did follow a protocol. We had hard, hard conversations because we knew that no matter what we were doing when making this recommendation, it was about people's jobs. If we were going to consolidate and have one ELA class, then we weren't just talking about changing our courses, we were talking about people. And that was a hard conversation to have, and not one that we came to lightly. And, yeah, I'm gonna hand it over to you guys, and then I'll probably talk again.
So my name is Bobby Flanagan. I have been teaching in Nashua since sixth grade was in the elementary school. So I went for four years, I was at Led Street, sixth grade, moved up. At that time, I taught a 90-minute block of ELA. And I want you to just keep that term in your head, English Language Arts. Transitioned to teaching math for a while, then I taught just reading, and then I taught reading and writing, and now I'm reading. So it's really been inconsistent for my entire Nashua career. I was thinking about what you need to hear, and Mr. Poska said, "When you talk, I want you to talk from your heart, and why are you passionate about this change?" So when I think about what ELA is, it's reading and writing. Reading and writing go hand in hand together, and I don't think anybody can argue that. What Carrie just said about kids needing to be writing informationally in other subjects needs to be happening. Maybe more, maybe that's where we need to really work on that. I was thinking, if Nashua said to us, "We need a new ELA, ELA, not reading, not writing, program", what would we wanna look for? You would not find a program out there for us that is written for reading or a program that is written for writing. That does not exist, that's not how it works, that's not how kids learn. I got a new student just the other day, who, when she looked at her schedule, she had come to me for reading, and now she had to go to writing. And she came to me and she said, "Mrs. Flanagan, it says writing, so I come to you, right, because you're my reading teacher." So I think that speaks volumes to where our kids know reading and writing goes hand in hand. And I think we need to remember that when we're, we're trying to implement what is best for kids. I feel like we keep saying that, and this is truly what your teachers, who have a lot of experience, feel is best for kids. We need to teach reading and writing together, they should not be separated. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Allen, I teach seventh grade literacy. I've been teaching in the Nashville School District for 16 years now, 11 of them at Elm Street. Previous five, I was a substitute, so I've been in every building. And I've had several of your children in my class, I've had you in my class. I love teaching my class, I feel like my class literacy is part of who I am. I tell my kids every day, we read, we write, we talk every day. And it's hugely important to me. And it is. But as Bobby was saying, you can't teach reading and writing separately. And that's the way we've been doing it for as long as we've been middle schools. I was a seventh grader at Penachuck Middle School the year the roof fell in. It was actually Penachuck Junior High at that point. And when I walked into my first day teaching in Elm Street, Elm Street looked a lot, pretty much the same as Penachuck Junior High looked 25 years ago. We had seven periods, the kids were leveled, we rotated, the teachers taught in their isolated little bubble, and we moved on when the bell rang. Learning was dictated by the bell. Things have changed slightly in the last 15 years since I've been around, but it's taken a lot of work and it's been slow, and we have not moved as quickly as some of our ideas have come about. Middle school steering and the ELA steering were hard for me. Really, really hard. I walked into those meetings ready to argue, we need two separate ELA blocks, 90 minutes. It's how we've always done it, it's, I've seen it effective with my kids. But the research didn't bear it out, and we have too many appointments in a day. I knew when I recommended with my committee to go down to four-person teams, that I was cutting my own job. That I was cutting my sister's job at Penachuck, that I was cutting some of my friends in, in the audience's jobs. Because that's what's best for kids. As your resident literacy teacher on this committee, I hope you recognize that this hurts me, it's hard. Only ever taught literacy, I love it, but we need to move in this direction of four-person teams, six periods a day, working collaboratively with our teammates to make sure our kids are reading and writing in every subject because we are all teachers of reading and writing, not just the English teachers. Thank you.
All right. Comments, questions? Daniels Williams, and then Mr. Johnson.
So as passionate as you are, can I ask you a question? So as, as you're moving literacy into these classes, is the 12 to 17 minutes going to be enough to do math and literacy, to do science and literacy?
Yes, so there is reading in every subject area. I've been teaching literacy for 11 years now, and I don't need a textbook. The kids can walk in my room with their science reading, and we can read and write about that. Their social studies reading, we can read about math, we can read about all sorts of different types of stuff. And that extra 12 minutes is not just in my class, but it's in social studies. They have more time to read and do deep learning there, and in sci, in science and in maths, where we have more time across the disciplines to do interdisciplinary work and deep learning together.
If, if I, yeah, if I may, I think Mike just hit it on the head. Like, that, that solid yes, there is time for it. But if you look at the standards across all the other areas, reading and writing is part of every content area. So again, I think it goes back to mindsets of like, if I'm a science teacher or a math teacher, I'm not responsible for literacy. You've always been responsible for literacy. But now that I have a literacy class, and there's a place I need to go to, almost gives me permission not to go as deep. So again, I think that's part when we're going into our shared vision and, and, and common beliefs. It's almost to that point of, there is time in it, it's part of the other standards, and how do we support one another? And middle school philosophy is about integration, it's not about silos. So, you know, I think Mike just hit it on the head of, there will be time for that. And, and back to Reagan's point is, you know, we know one of our areas of need this year is how do we differentiate? How do we build our, our organizational learning around a deeper understanding of the standards? And then how do we properly assess? So there's still a lot of work to go, but I think there is time to address all the standards across the content areas.
I have a question, I know, like, waiting for someone to call on me, but one of, and, and I will admit that I'm one of those people, I, I have an emotional attachment to the literacy program. And it really has nothing to do with education or teaching, but that was really the first class where my kid came home and started showing me her personality and education. And the books that she was choosing in your class, I was like, oh, she's a cool kid.
She is a cool kid.
She is a cool kid. But that's like when I saw her individuality start coming out. And what I get concerned with when we start talking about cut, cutting the literacy program or classes is, where does that individuality come out now? How do they pick and choose the things that they can dive deep into and not just have it be, you know, dive, diving deeper in science, but, but how does she explore, how, how do they explore, you know, where they're going to take their direction in life? And I want to say, I know Mr. Pearson is up there. The first time my daughter came home and said, "Mom, my teacher said just because isn't an answer." She said, "Mr. Pearson told me." And I have to say, that was the first day that I was like, oh, this is like, middle school's awesome. Like, this, this is where the kids become who they're gonna be, and I'm just worried about cutting, just cutting that color.
So I guess I'm a little concerned about using the word cutting because we're not cutting anything, and we are certainly not cutting literacy. Literacy is something that is, is in every single class that we have. Music literacy, we have literacy in art, there is literacy in everything that we are doing. And it is not just the seventh grade literacy class that is going to be absorbed. We also have a school where there is an eighth grade writing class and an eighth grade reading class. So that is also being absorbed. Most of our schools have a sixth grade writing class and a sixth grade reading class, all being absorbed because the research shows that an integrated approach to teaching language arts is what's best for kids. Mike?
The kids benefited from what you're talking about in my room and in Mr. Pearson's room because of choice.
Right.
Not because of literacy. I could have been teaching Spanish or Portuguese or how to basket weave, it didn't matter. It was the opportunity to cho, to choose and be who she was within my, within my class.
Right.
I'm not gonna say it was me.
A great teacher will allow students to become who they are meant to be, so.
Yes.
So I think to that point, and I, I wrote it down, and I'm glad that you said it. It, it's, how do we create that culture of student voice and choice, right? How do we empower students, right? Again, to find that pathway based on the standards. The standards don't have to change, right? Seventh grade standards are seventh grade standards. But how does a student have their voice and choice to demonstrate proficiency and competency of those standards? And those are larger conversations, but that really gets to deeper learning and student engagement. And those are the conversations that we need to have. So I think that's really important as we go forward. But it is around, you know, how do we shore up our tier-one curriculum? How do we move that system that supports kids? And like, these are the powerful conversations that are going on, and they're hot conversations. They're difficult conversations, and, but we're moving in the right direction. But I think just hearing it from Mike, Carrie, and Bobby, it's around students. They said it multiple times in standards.
Yeah, whenever, whenever I sit down to meetings, the first thing I read on my, whatever's in front of me is students first. And it keeps me focused on, on what is important. So again, like what I said when I opened up, this is my emotional attachment to it. It has nothing to do with what's right or wrong, it's just that, that question was about me.
It's my emotional attachment, too, it's okay.
Mr. Johnson and then Ms. Lamphier, I, I cut him off earlier.
That's all right. So looking at it, and for kids who are more interested in things like literacy, is there a chance of UAs being offered where they can go deeper into maybe creative writing or some other, you know, literacy-type class that could be offered as a UA for those kids who want to get even more into that?
That would be so cool. I think that, that, you know, this, this opens up good conversation for that, right? I think right now, we, we have that opportunity, at least with kids through, through clubs and through advisory. We, there's places where teachers are having book clubs after school. So I think there are ways that we are trying to do that right now within the system that we have, but I think this opens up a lot. I, a creative writing UA would be incredible, kids would totally love it. So I think that things like that are, are conversations for down the line.
Okay, so, so my question is, you know, we have a lot of changes coming up with the teachers, especially the middle school teachers with the new building, and, and the changes to the, the leveling. And then, you know, if we do the change in period and the change in the teams, and are the teachers prepared for this? And if they're not prepared, how are we preparing them? What kind of changes are they gonna have to make on a daily basis?
You can talk first.
So the ELA department is currently operating on a curriculum that's nine years old and hasn't really been revised at all. So we're in need of ELA curriculum work anyways. I know that the other departments are going through the process of looking, reevaluating their own curriculums and integrating some of these standards we're talking about in ELA. Curriculum is always changing, and that's something the teachers are gonna have to be able to deal with.
So one of the, will we, go ahead, Bobby.
I was just gonna say, as a reading teacher, you, you can't not teach writing. So I'm a reading teacher right now, and my students are writing compare-and-contract essays in class right now. So our reading or writing teachers, or however you wanna look at it, they know all the standards. This is, this is what they do, this is their craft. So I don't feel that it's some kind of new burden that would be put on them.
Thank you.
I have a question. So my question is, is this something that has already been decided or something that we will decide on?
Yeah, the, the middle school steering committee has already voted on this.
Ms. Raymond, how many positions?
Can, can I say something about that?
Yep.
So prior to the change in the boundary line, it was only teachers in their first or second year that would have been affected by this change. And since the boundary line, that has changed as well.
So, and I just wanna be careful with the boundary line, because I don't wanna be solely on, what it really comes down to is about enrollment. And so the boundary line could have stayed the same, and then we looked at the overall enrollment, and we could be having the same conversations. So when you look at, when we get into the next couple of slides, you'll see how tight the decisions are, whether it's two hundred and thirty kids on a team, or two hundred and ten kids on a team, or two hundred and sixty kids on a team, or one eighty. Like, that's really tight between a two person, like a, a, two teams per grade level, or three teams per grade level, or two and a half teams per grade level. Um, and so you could have two hundred and fifty kids on a team, or three hundred kids on a team, and you still have three teams. And we're just at, just moving twenty kids or thirty kids, is that fine line on how many teams do you need at a grade level? So I don't wanna just say, because we moved the B, the BOE moved the line a couple of blocks down, that because of that Broad Street, this, like, because I don't want Broad Street failing like single dealt either. We should be looking at enrollment numbers every year to be having these conversations on how many teachers is this gonna impact? And right now, because of the declining enrollment, that we're really close to two hundred kids per grade level, up to two hundred and fifteen kids per grade level, or two twenty. And that's a fine line between the, the two teams or three teams.
Oh, okay. So just to go back to, how many currently are teaching the literacy, the, the extra to go from a four, go from a, yeah, five to a four? Because really, it's not, it's not five to a four really, because we're, we're throwing language in there, right? So ignoring language. So we have some schools that have two English language arts classes and six, some that have two in seventh, and I think some that have two in eighth. So how many extra ELA, extra ELA teachers do we have? And I'm using air quotes because I don't think they're extra. I just trying to get a number in my head. Without changing, like, if we just assumed the sa- just, if we, if we do what they're suggesting, and we say no more literacy, no more writing, or whatever the extra, other extra one is, how many teachers is that?
The list that I have in, in my office, but essentially, I just, yeah, it's, it's about twelve teachers.
About twelve? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for them?
No, I appreciate you guys coming in and, and sharing this with us. I think you can tell from all of us that we're also, this is a hard conversation for all of us to be having, and I appreciate your candor and your, um, your ability to come up and explain yourselves and show us your work, to quote you guys. So I appreciate it.
So I, I, again, I think that last question leads right into our numbers. Um, so there was a couple of questions on, um, how did we come up with the middle school enrollment and projections? Um, I do have Jonathan Foster here, who's our data analyst. Um, so I'm gonna invite him to come down on how he calculated some of the numbers, um, some of his um, behind the work scenes and um, kinda going from there. Jonathan? Want this, and you wanna drive here?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jonathan Foster, uh, data analyst for the district. Uh, I've been working with a number of people to try to wrap our heads around this whole project. Uh, it started with a contractor we hired to draw some lines. Um, I then took those lines and applied them to our student data and worked with our tech department to get those uploaded into Aspen and make those definitions happen. And uh, what we're looking at here are some numbers from probably the third week in February. And uh, so we're looking at projections for next year, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, uh, based on those new lines, the, the final lines that we decided as a district. And we've come up with these projections on this table. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of the methodology, um, there's about two thousand twenty-four middle school students we're expecting next year. And about seventeen hundred of them, um, are students, uh, that are going to the school as defined by what their address is. There's uh, I think about three hundred students on variance. Uh, and we made some assumptions around those students to get to these numbers. So, um, we started, well, here's our current enrollment and team organization. You'll see these numbers throughout the upcoming slides. So I can come back to this.
Yeah, and this is just another example where you could see um, the different configurations that we, we were talking about earlier on. Um, Penachuk, Karen, uh, two teams in sixth grade of four. Um, seventh grade, two teams of five people, but at Fairgrounds, they have a two, two five-person teams in sixth grade. But it's different than Penachuk in eighth grade. So again, that consistency and our inconsistency. So again, just the um, how teams are kinda configured.
Dude, does the number of teams change from year to year? Like, I'm just thinking of my-
Yeah.
It hasn't, okay. So I was just thinking, like, when my son was born, like, there were no rooms in the maternity ward. There were so many kids. And then a few years later, there was like a baby dip, so.
And you could, yeah, and a- again, I think that's where um, you see some of the, the variances between even um, you know, Elm Street in, in eighth grade has a class size of twenty-four with two hundred and ninety, you know, students. Um, and Penachuk has, you know, class sizes of nineteen eighteen. But the, the number of teams really hasn't changed in a number of years. And that's why I think these conversations right now seem so drastic, because there has been um, little movement on, on reconfiguring teams.
How come some of these teams are only four people already?
Yes. Yeah, so, yeah.
And how, I mean, if, there's already only four people on the team, and why is that and how is it working out?
Yeah, and so that, for those teams, nothing changes. Other, uh, yeah, other than, right? So these are our current numbers.
Yep, you'll see these throughout the slides. Um, I can come back to these main tables. Uh, but you'll see these projections compared to our current enrollment in the upcoming slides. It'll be helpful if I move forward and we can begin to break down some of the methodology and how this all shakes out. Um, so just to quickly reiterate what I was saying before, a little over two thousand middle school students, seventeen hundred sixty-two of those, by the current count, are non-varian students, and we have two hundred and sixty-two students with variants. Um, so if we break down that seventeen sixty-two, you see those colored numbers below for each school. Um, we're seeing about a little over a hundred with a special ed placement, which we're assuming are gonna go to McCarthy. And then the remaining variant students, we made the assumption to split those in a thirds. Uh, if you were to look at the map, uh, that I was looking at, it was in about an even smattering of schools that, uh, these variant students attend. Um, it's not perfect measure, but um, you know, the way it's gonna shake out, we estimate will be roughly by a third for these uh, just under two hundred students.
So here's how, uh, here's where we get to some specific examples of sixth grade. Uh, we've got seven hundred and seventeen sixth grade students, six hundred and twenty-four of them are non-varian students, and ninety-three with a variance. Um, so we're assuming thirty of those are special ed, McCarthy, and another twenty-one per school, uh, for the remaining variant students. And that table on the right shows you our projected enrollment interval. So let me break that down to team projections. We thought it was pretty clear cut for Penachuk and McCarthy. Uh, Fairgrounds is where we saw, um, maybe they need four, some more teachers. And we laid out some of those options there, uh, whether it's two teams of four or a ten total teacher, uh, situation where there's two four-person teams and a one-two-person team. And uh, the last option, there would be a three, would be three teams of four. Uh, and you'll see at the bottom row of those green squares with those projected students per class. And the corresponding estimated cost with adding additional teachers. Uh, and again, going back to those two original tables at the beginning, uh, you see the current year configuration, comparing that to next year's projected configuration. Um, and for Fairgrounds, we have, uh, put the bolded option of two teams of four, just for comparison. And uh, as we noted at the bottom here, we're gonna monitor, uh, the Fairgrounds recommendation. Um, as we mentioned before, there's a lot of variables at play here. I think these numbers are directionally accurate. Uh, however, especially in sixth grade, uh, there's the additional variable of student attrition, uh, going to charter schools. Um, and, you know, a lot can shake out from data day, so we will monitor this and we'll provide updated figures. Um, but this is where we stand, uh, one week from the state in February.
And again, I just wanna, you know, we did put a cost associated with it. Um, you know, I think we, again, have to make the right decisions for students, but again, there is priorities. As we noted at, at the beginning of, of the presentation, um, if we're only receiving five million dollars of new money, where are we investing, right? So if we need e- special education, ELL teachers, um, you know, so, some of these um, teachers are currently already on staff, right? So it's, um, it might not be a new cost, but it's a reshifting of, of money. So again, I just wanna caution us when we start saying, well, it, wouldn't it just be great just to have three teams of four and make that decision? Yeah, I think, you know, that's a eight hundred and forty thousand dollar kind of decision that we have to, um, or a plus two hundred, plus two hundred and eighty thousand. So again, not that I wanna um, talk about money, but we, that has to be um, in, in our, on our minds as we move forward. Yep.
Comment? Um, I think the Fairgrounds being this middle school that's in the inner city, and we have the cost associated with that, it reminds me very much of the Mont Pleasant conversation, where that was also an inner city school, and that was where we were thinking about making cuts. I, I just, I, I just needed to point that out, because I, I just feel like we should, you know, make sure that we're considering that.
Yep, no, absolutely. And again, I think it goes back on student needs. Like, I'm not comfortable with twenty-eight kids in a class. Uh, uh, you know, I, I think that's way too many. Like, that's the fine line, you know? If we lose, um, unfortunately, we don't retain forty students, and there's a hundred and ninety students at Fairgrounds. Right? Is that two teams that's closer to twenty-three, twenty-four kids in a class, which is more consistent with Elm and Penachuk? Is that something that we need to, to, like, have that discussion? But twenty-eight kids in a class, I think is way too high, you know? So, but again, I think we just need to have, you know, when we make that decision, what does that look like? And, you know, in sixth grade, we have the options of um, a two-person team to alleviate some of that stress. That's, we don't have that option in seventh and eighth grade due to certification. So I, I think we're looking at that, but it is that close of forty kids can make a difference.
Question, I guess, for you, Dr. Andre. Um, I might be naive, but um, well, over two hundred and fifty children on variances going to the schools that they're not assigned to, is that a huge amount? It seems like a big number to me.
Well, that's some of the um, elementary, so that's the fifth grade, right?
Include middle school.
Yeah, so that's some of the, the fifth grade as well, so.
And then, then I have a further question, because we're gonna have three middle schools that are gonna be providing the same learning opportunities for all of our students, which is not what we've had in the past. Um, would we need fewer variances then? Some of these people needed to go to a school because it had a different type of program than the middle school that their children were assigned to.
Yeah.
And, and also, thirdly, um, aren't we um, going to be providing services for a lot of special education students at the McCarthy Middle?
Correct. So the intensive need students, that, that's some of the variance, if, if Jonathan went back. So that, like, I think it was a hundred and twelve students.
Oh, okay.
That's a spe- on special education. So that's our intensive needs program. Um, and I agree with you. I think there's some aspects of, you know, families could have been shopping schools and asking for middle schools, like. Um, but the other aspect of it is, I wanna retain every family in, in the Nash West schools. So we um, been really working hard, um, meeting with families to see what's the root cause of, why do they want a variance? Um, is it academic? Is it cultural? Is something else going on? And the building principals have been doing a remarkable job, meeting with families to say, how can we help you? What's not working in this building? Um, and keeping some of the families. So we've seen actually a decrease in variances, um, just by trying to partner with the families before making any decisions around the variances.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I'm, I'm wondering, I'm wondering about the, the number of kids now going into Fairgrounds. Like, is that an, is that a line that isn't working for our district and isn't necessarily working for our families either? I mean, that's kind of what happened in Broad Street. Broad Street, the entire community came out and said, this doesn't work for, for our families. How is that working with Fairgrounds? I mean, are those students that should potentially be shifted into McCarthy? As we're getting more real numbers, the closer we get.
So I think when we were looking at moving those around, it was the equity, equity amongst the fair and reduced lunch. And we needed to keep some of those pockets together, or McCarthy was going to have more and Penachuk was gonna have more. So the figuration that we did had the most equity amongst it, because even if you took one of like the Fairgrounds neighborhoods and pulled it into McCarthy, you shifted it by almost one percent. It was a significant free and reduced lunch change.
I guess I worry about, yeah, I worry about um, isolate, about increasing numbers of, you know, people in poverty in one area without, without giving them the opportunity to have, you know, the new school.
Yes. So if we go, if we go back, I think I have it, um, this slide, um, pulled over there, but we're right around the same. Uh, all three middle schools have just about the same free and reduced um, lunch numbers. And that was the driver in making these decisions. Again, um, two schools are split, the elementary schools, Fairgrounds Elementary School and Dr. Chris are split. Um, and that was part of, and Broad Street would have been the third school that was split, um, just to balance um, the numbers in this school. So, um, again, these numbers are um, a little off. I mean, seven seventeen to uh, six thirty-eight is a smaller variance than we currently have. Um, and again, our free and reduced numbers are within uh, three to four percentage points uh, between the, the schools. So um, when we went through the exercise, we went through a lot of scenarios on how do we um, keep those numbers in that line? So if we start tweaking, uh, need- Um, keep those numbers in that line, so if we start tweaking a neighborhood here or there. We may have unintended consequences with the free and reduced lunch numbers.
I have a question.
Actually, Mr. Mira's was next, I'm sorry, Miss Daniels Williams.
Okay, um, can we go back to that other slide they were before? So forgive me for being silly, but at the bottom, um. It says if enrollment maintains or increases, then it's gonna be the middle option, right? But does that mean that the more expensive option going to be the three teams of four, that also is going to be for less students? I don't understand how having less students would also mean a more expensive option, like, I don't know if that's just me being silly or something. But that just doesn't make sense to me, that if there's going to be potentially more students than how that could be less.
Trying to get you, potentially more, more than the the two twenty-eight?
Well, in the middle of, yeah, because it says if it's at two twenty-eight or more, then it's gonna be seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, cause that's based when it says the recommendation, but if it's under that, based on what that message says that if it's. Because if it says it maintains or decreases, that's what's gonna happen, but if it decreases, then that could potentially be an option, I don't understand. And no one wants to go to twenty-eight, twenty-nine students in a class, I don't understand how that's gonna be eight hundred forty thousand dollars and there's gonna be less kids. And that's gonna be the same or more kids and only be seven hundred thousand dollars.
I I'm trying to figure out where the less kid is coming from.
Doctor Andre, I think what what, um, Mr. Mira's was talking about is in the middle, the middle slide. If there were ten staff budgeted at approximately seventy thou- thousand dollars per staff member, that's your seven hundred thousand. By adding two more teachers, it's actually plus a hundred and forty, that makes sense?
It's just teachers.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that's my question.
Question to this too, um, because Monahan Manor is now open and all them will go to Fairgrounds. So I'm kind of worried about how these numbers are gonna look, because they're not even fully. Enrolled and, but there's, it's almost halfway and the they, those numbers are not accounted to here.
Yeah, so that's why we have to monitor the enrollment, and so if the enrollment keeps on going up, then we have to add, right? And so, but we shouldn't be adding, and if the, if the enrollment's not there, so. Or they might be students who are currently in, in, um, other parts of Nashua. So are we double counting students?
Right, no. I understand, um, but also like how the teacher said last week she got a new student. I know that there's a lot of un, I just wanted to make sure that we knew that that's a whole big new apartment complex. That's gonna go into. The green area that seems to be of of most concern is my. Bringing it to the table, that's why I brought it.
And, you know, um, and right now, there's two teams where there possibly could be three teams. So we, um, Fairgrounds has the smallest, like, square footage between all three middle schools. So we, we're cognizant on that as well, so again, I think we're, um, we have to look at our enrollment. And, you know, as we, uh, Ms. Bishop and I, like, we need to have a elementary conversation where those lines are. But we have to watch our enrollment more closely and then staff our buildings accordingly. So, uh, we haven't had these conversations in a while, and again, so if there, if there's more students that are ending up in the Fairgrounds. Um. Um, catch area, do we have to tweak lines at that point? So I went in, I went in proactively tweak it until we see the the exact numbers.
Totally understood, just saying, cause we have sixty-three days to decide what this is going on and how many. You know, that's the topic of today, right? Of how many teams are we gonna have, how how many teachers, how much of this? I just wanted to bring it to the table because they're here.
Yeah, no, and a- again, those are the conversations where it's really, unfortunately, it's it's based on student enrollment. And so, uh, as we, we have to monitor those numbers, that actually, the enrollment dictates, uh, staffing patterns. And that's where we we need to monitor it closely, and again, we're, we're at this fine line. Of like two twenty-eight, right, uh, like, like, that's, if it's two hundred and fifty kids. You're having three teams, there's no question about it. Two twenty-eight to two hundred, like, you're like, if you're under two hundred, you possibly, you're at two teams. And again, that's, that's the fine line that we're in right now, so if we lose thirty students, right? Um, and they, families make different choices, like, that's a big swing. And so that's why I I'm saying, we just have to be careful, so we have sixty-three days. But it is conversations, quite honestly, that we have at the middle school, I mean, at the elementary level and the high school level. Every year, we look at the elementary, uh, on what's our class sizes and are we adding a classroom, are we like closing a classroom? Um, we haven't had, middle school is hard because it's four, it's it's a hundred kids, it's four, like, it's four teachers. It's not one classroom, can you absorb a classroom? So we haven't had this discussion at the middle school for a long time and, like, two twenty-eight's a not a good number. Like, I just, it's a horrible number, like, it's just, it's that. It's a sticky point, like, it's, like, on, if it's two thirty, like, there's, there's no question that you probably have three teams. You have to find two more kids, right? So, but again, as as you're moving that kind of conversation, right? But as you're moving that conversation, it's three-person teams and whatever that class size is gonna be. What, what's that overall impact on the budget as well? So that's, it it, it's, it's, it's not easy. So that's sixth grade.
Are, is the district doing any kind of outreach to those sixth grade families? Um, to show them the, 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 the changes that this, the, the steering committee has done? But also touring the schools, all of the the new investment that we've put into middle school. To try and, um, make the case to those parents that Nashua is setting ourselves up to, for a place where we can meet kids' needs. As well as some of the charter schools where we're, we've been historically losing a hundred and, a hundred and fifty kids a year. And then they come back for ninth grade, cause they believe in our high schools, but it's the middle school where we have this, um, confidence deficit, I think, with families. Are we, do we have a.
So.
PR campaign to get, get parents excited about?
It has not been launched yet, um, uh. Um, but, uh, there have been conversations about that, but we also need to have the conversation here. Uh, before we actually started, um, approaching our parents on the new experiences.
When is that decision, I don't, we never considered charters in my family, like, we just, it wasn't an option for us, we're a public school all the way. But, so when do families have to make that decision to apply to the charter?
Some of, some of it's going on right now. So Jonathan, you wanna go the, uh, next slide?
All right, if we move on to seventh grade here, if you will, um. Let's see, so so just to give you an idea of. If we're treating all, uh, we're looking at all grades here, um, and we've seven hundred and seventeen sixth grade students. Um. Seventh grade, that goes down to six hundred and forty-six, just to give you an idea of what attrition could look like. Um, of these six hundred and forty-six students, five hundred and fifty-six don't have a variance. And, um, we have ninety students with a variance, forty at McCarthy, and forty-two. Uh, evenly distributed, and that gives us. These projected enrollments for the seventh grade at each school. Um, we've set up a couple of similar scenarios here. Um, it's not quite as tight as the sixth grade. Uh, you'll see, again, Fairgrounds, three scenarios, eight, ten, or twelve teachers. Um, that middle option at twenty-one per class. And again, at the bottom, you can compare this current year on the first row. And, uh, projection for next year. Um, and you know, you'll see, the numbers are pretty close at Penn Druck and Elm Stash McCarthy. Uh, Fairgrounds, it's a little bump, but still, uh, at just about twenty-one students per class. Assuming, uh. This, assuming a ten-person team, I'm sorry, this should have been, uh. That should have been. Yeah, ten total teachers, yeah, two, ten over ten, twenty-one. I know my tens. Uh, and again, you don't have to eighth grade, um, six hundred and sixty-one total students. Five hundred and eighty-nine variants and seventy-nine with variants. Giving us these projected enrollments, and again, similar scenarios, um. Again, varying current year to, um, projections next year. With a couple of options on the table for Fairgrounds, considering eight, ten, or twelve teachers total. Um, so looking at Penn Druck and McCarthy, uh, those are. Fairly close, even a tenth, uh, Fairgrounds, um. We have some options here, uh, depending on how that, uh, enrollment takes out. We'll make that decision, uh, as we continue to monitor, uh, but if you look at. The ten total teachers, uh, that middle ground there, we're at twenty per class.
Thank you, I, one of the things that we talked about when we were first designing, uh, McCarthy. Was this idea of having the extra space on the, the bottom floor, or potentially bringing some students back into the district? Is that something that's on the docket for this fall or something that we're still working towards?
So we've been having com- communications with the Department of Education on how to make that work, if we can have a school within a school. Um, so, um, we are looking at possibly like a K-twelve model of how to bring students back. Um, um, that are on that cusp and have a more fluid, um, system, so, yes. But we're working with the Department of Education on, um, almost like a Brett Wood, um. Um, Franklin Street kind of situation, so. Um, that is the plan, to see what kids can we bring back, but also use it as a, um, a learning opportunity. For a job embedded professional development for other programs, special education programs throughout the district where we can learn side by side. Um, special educators can learn side by side each other on what's working, um, um. And and come up with different types of programs, so that is the plan, uh, we'll still look at the numbers. Um, that is our intention, if we can bring more kids back, but, um, we also wanna build a program, right? We don't wanna bring kids back and not have the staffing for it, and then it's less services.
Right, that's where I was going with that, cause I would imagine that would require some building up of the program, kind of like we had to rebuild Brentwood. And and make it a destination for other districts as well.
So, um, yeah, so just.
It is kind of, right?
Wedding, and I just think Franklin Street is not Aruba.
Well, I, I guess I think of it kind of, and it's not the same, but I think. Our deaf and hard of hearing program, right, like Nashua is the destination place to send kids for that, because we, we have a really great program. And so, um, the idea of, part of, part of the idea of McCarthy six years ago. Uh, when the architects were working with people in the district was to create, uh. Create a facility that allowed our district to save some money on out-of-district placement, but also, um, become a hub. I just was curious, I know we've been talking about a lot of other things, and I was curious if that was something that was also happening for the fall? Or if it was going to be a couple of years in while we ramp up all of the other things that we're talking about.
So we're working with the Department of Education on how how to make that happen, it might be a slow roll rollout year one. I mean, there's a lot going on in that building, so, um, when it looks like year one and year two, it might be a little different. But that are, that's our intent to actually, um, get that paperwork, um, in line. Just a a couple of things where, um, Jonathan was talking about, um, variances. Some of those students who have variances outside of special education might be at McKinney Vento. So it might not be a choice, right? And so, uh, again, there's, you know, every case is different, um. So, but, you know, there might be more than one reason why a student's on a variance, um.
I mean, I have to say, I appreciate this, the thought of student first, right? Like, I mean, that's the point of McKinney Vento also, but like, the student needs to be where the student needs to be, to be successful, so.
Yeah, and then the other aspect of it, just around Elm Street, um, Elm Street has two point five. Um, teams in in some grade levels for a number of years too, so when I was saying three, I was giving it. Three point, so just, I was giving out some misinformation, so, um, Elm Street has been flexible over the years. Um, in some of their team configurations, so I apologize for that. And so, um, so this is eighth grade numbers, and then, um, in the last two slides. Um, John, it just really what we looked at, um, if we're talking about class size at the. At the middle school, just really what's our class size at the elementary? Um, so we've been having conversations on, uh, again, what does it look like? It's our average class size across the districts, um, and again, you know, where do we as a, as a school community. Wanna be, um, and then on the next slide, there, there's questions on, um. Classes being highlighted, um, the ones in green might be high, um, so I, I think, um, you look at. Uh, Dr. Chris, um, the two that's highlighted, the sixty kids with two teachers. That's a problem, right? Um, and then there's other, um, classrooms that might have fifty-six students and four teachers, it's now a fourteen. Uh, so, so those are kind of conversations, again, looking at the numbers, where, where, and this happens more at the elementary. Based on bubbles, based on, um, student population going through, we add a class, we take away a class. Um, depends on the enrollment, so these are again, where, what's our current configurations? And then just rolling numbers up next year, do we have to make some shifts, different investments again? Um, even though it was a lot on middle school philosophy configurations. This is still a bigger kind of conversation on when we present the budget in a couple of weeks. Where do we have to make some decisions, what's our priority and how do we go from there? So it's not, um, it's just more information, like, these are, um. Uh, some of the the class numbers that we currently have, again, I think, you know, we need to share them publicly.
Julia? Question, um, or concern, I guess, looking at the eighth grade team configuration. Um, seventh and sixth, and, and the fact that Fairgrounds is in this kind of. Nev- Neverland sort of for all three grades, and and I'm just concerned that. We could have several students appear and enroll the week before school opens. And are we gonna have enough staff to accommodate that? The, these lines seem so close. It it's, it's very concerning to me.
It's very concerning to me too, and these are, again, as we have these conversations on, as we move forward. I I think they're, it's a horrible number, right? And it's, you know, in, um, so that's, that's a kind of conversation, especially seventh and eighth grade, it's four teachers a year. So, you know, at the elementary level, we talk about like bubble classes going through, right? And then, um, it it just changes the dynamic of the middle school, it's, it's much harder to be this fluid. With the numbers that are close, or we make a decision, right, as a board, saying we're gonna invest in the extra teams per grade level. And what's that impact on other areas?
Um, yeah, I just, what I guess, what, what, and this is probably your fear as well, um, is. That if we have to let some staff go. Um, during, prior to the next. That if we have to let some staff go um during, prior to the next school year. And then we're faced with needing to increase the number of teachers at Fairgrounds at each grade level. We're gonna have lost some really good people, and and they will not be sitting around waiting for us to call them the third week in August.
And I agree, but unfortunately, that's the struggle we have with elementary as well every year.
Thank you.
Daniels Williams, do you have your light on for a reason?
I I do have a question, so um I'm just trying to figure out how I wanted to word it. I know that we we're talking about Fairgrounds and we're talking about how up and down that is. Um, why are all those teachers employed at that school now?
Yeah, um so we have, I think you have to look at the current configurations. Right, so that's how many teachers that we have, like if you went sixth, seventh and eighth grade, you will see how many teachers are currently on teams. And they're part of the overloading budget.
Thirteen.
For Fairgrounds?
Oh, just, just for Fairgrounds, you have um four teachers?
Fairgrounds has three teams of four, so. If you're looking at those, those bars, it's number of students, number of teams, number of teachers per team. And then the average class size.
Right, so but I, that's what I'm saying, like, when it's saying, when you're splitting it by teams. Now, how does it sit?
There's that row.
So there's three teams of four, four teachers on a team, so there's twelve teachers. And then the following year, there would be two teams with four, there'll be eight teachers.
So it'd be a loss of four teachers.
Right.
But then a gain of four teachers over in. So it's not like the four teachers disappear into the ether, theoretically, the the total number of teachers stays the same? Okay, so explain that to me, another, in different.
Well, because you have the literacy teachers.
Right.
Right, but like a math teacher might move over to Penachuk.
Okay.
Might, because you're losing teams at Elm Street as well.
So if you're.
As part of the budget, can we see, will we see like a total staff? Like, I feel like I would have a better.
Yeah, and that's what.
Mental image of it.
And that's what Jonathan's working.
Okay, I think I really wanted to highlight a lot of this before we got into the budget, so when you started seeing those numbers, you can be like, oh. That coincides with that screen. Yeah, I think it's it's helpful to have the frame of reference, and I really appreciate having all of these numbers, like publicly and. Where the like, the sticky points are, and actually, I really in appreciated the whole presentation. Um because I, I think, um I I just think it's helpful for us, and I think it's helpful for the community. Um but I definitely am interested to see budget-wise, like. Total numbers.
Yeah, and that's why we wanted to throw in the budget aspect as opposed to some of the just philosophical of where we're going.
Yeah, and I I appreciate it, cause this wouldn't make sense in a budget meeting, but it definitely will impact the budget conversations. Thank you. Uh Mr. Johnson, sorry.
One quick question, good looking at the uh sixth grade and the seventh grade. We have the options for Fairgrounds at two twenty-eight in sixth grade, um but in seventh grade, Penachuk at two twenty-one is set at three teams. What's the difference there? Like, why is a higher number, we're considering the three possibilities? Whereas the seventh grade is a lower number and it's set at three teams.
So I I think just as we were kind of going through, just as two options as we throw it out there, but that's the fine line between. It's the two teams or three teams, I again, that's why we put the. Like, monitoring the numbers, right? Cause even, hate to say, at. At um Penachuk, if they lose fifteen students and they're at two hundred, they might be at two teams. You know, and with some of the concern there is if we're, we miss a certain deadline, contractually and by law. Then we're at three teams.
Got it.
So.
What's the deadline, April?
Uh what's this, first full moon after the second Tuesday?
Signed in unicorning. That late?
I'm gonna pull up that date. Mr. Marku, can you say that again? I'm just gonna pull it up on the calendar.
I'm gonna say it into the microphone, so people.
First Friday after the second Tuesday, so May twentieth? The second Tuesday is the fourteenth. Right, so the twentieth. Twenty-first.
Yeah, it would be that Friday.
That Friday, the twenty-fourth, okay.
May twenty-fourth.
First Friday after the second, the seventeenth? First Friday.
Jeez, who came up with that?
So those are the numbers that we have to be careful with, it's, thank you. So a- again, I just, where we in- included the elementary, just perspective on where we need investments in the elementary. As as well, in following some bubbles, but also those conversations on when we present the budget on. Um, you know, when we're looking at aligning resources, where might some opportunities be, so. Um I I think it's fantastic that we have um small class sizes, especially at the elementary. All the research around class size is at the elementary level, um so again, I think that's a worthy investment. Um and that's something that we have to consider in the larger scope of of things of where, where, in a. Limited budget, where do we invest in small class sizes, and again, the research is more at the elementary level. That's all I have, I think we had a lot of questions over the last twenty minutes or so, um so I, uh but.
Any more questions, Ms. Raymond? You're not looking for any type of motion state?
And this, this will lead into, we're gonna have a meeting at the beginning of April. In regards to the DOJ report, so we can see what the expectations are with that, how that needs to fit into our budget. Um and then try, try to weave in our our board goal meetings. So that when we're talking about these things, we can have a general direction that we're going in, but that is proving to be extremely hard to schedule. Um but I will try my best.
Will that be public, you think?
It's all public, yep, and all of the information that'll be given to us will be presented to the public, so people can understand. You know, how how we come up, this is a new, a new thing that we're gonna do, where we come up with two or three really solid goals. That the board is driven by, and then I make the agendas that are really purposeful in regards to what are those shifts or supports that we wanna see. So, there's, is there anything else on the, oh yeah, we have more on the agenda. Let me scroll all the way back up top, I wanna thank everybody for for bearing through that conversation with us. Um I think we've been fielding a lot of questions whenever we go to Hannaford or Market Basket in regards to what's going on. So um I know now that all of the board members are on the same page, and then obviously it's presented to the district in a way that they can review it. See it, um it'll be on ETV, I apologize to Nashua North. We have pushed out their game being aired on ETV by us being a bit wordy. As we always are, but I think it was important, um but they're gonna, uh Pete has a. A runner going on the live TV right now, saying that it's gonna be pushed out, so I just wanna make sure that our students know that we are. We are usurping their time, but we're giving it back. So we have more on the agenda, um Dr. Andrew, I wanna say thank you for putting all of that together for us. I know that wasn't an easy presentation to do, um to make it as concise as you did and answer everybody's questions, so now we're.
Yeah, I just wanna thank the team, uh really, uh it's, it was a team effort, um so kudos goes to the team and.
That's fantastic, so now we are going into new business, which Ms. Julio had, Ms. Julio and Ms. Raymond had talked about this. And I wanted to just have an open discussion about the solar eclipse that's happening on April eighth. Trying to come up with a way to ensure um not just viewing ability, but safety. Um so Doctor, uh I don't know, Sharon, Ms. Raymond, if you wanna, sorry, Ms. Julio, Ms. Raymond, I'm. If you guys wanna kind of take the floor on this, I know we have some answers.
Right, I mean, I'll just mention that um at the State House, um there was a bill proposed to. Declare it a school holiday, um that failed spectacularly, people didn't want to be forced to have to close schools and then make it up in June. Um but I know that a lot of the north country schools are doing it, but I don't think, where are we at, ninety-five percent? Like, we're not even close to totality, so um so I personally voted against the bill. Uh because I just didn't think it was in the best interest of Nashville, but I I don't know what we're doing as a district to make sure kids don't stare at the sun.
Well, our.
Outside of, cause it it doesn't happen, it happens at like three thirty in the afternoon.
Like, yeah, two thirty, it's right as the buses hit two thirty.
No, I I just um was tiptoe, was kind of piggybacking on on, cause Ms. Ms. Raymond brought it up a while ago, and I just wanted to make sure that we talked about it again, she mentioned it. And then it, we, and we never talked about it, so I just wanted to have us make a decision about it.
Yes, so uh Dr. Safdie has been in communication with Twenty-Fourth Century. And see if we can do some after-school activities um for families, so even students who may not be involved in that program. Um I have a meeting at the end of the week that are after-school uh programs as well, so can we do some um community-based activities?
That would be great, since it's a good learning experience, that would be wonderful, yeah.
Yep, and I think it impacts the elementary school buses the most, so instead of all the kids running to one side of the bus and tipping it over like a boat. Okay, so I'm glad we had that conversation, um we actually need to go into. Well, we'll do public comments first, we do have a a quick non-public that we need to pop into. Can we do not, the public comments first, wrap up with board comments, and then we can close out the meeting, everybody can go home.
I do have a liaison report from the JSSBC, it's pretty brief. Do you want me to include that tonight, or I can save it for our next meeting?
They take less than a minute, so.
Okay, okay, so I don't know when you wanna do that.
Just do it now.
Okay, so we met um several weeks ago, and things are progressing really well at McCarthy. Um the furniture is going to arrive in early May for three of the four areas, and in the fourth area in June. Um and three of the areas are ninety-five percent finished with the punch lists. Um and we will, the members of the JSSBC will have a a, an official tour coming up soon. So we can see how everything looks, um Penachuk is going to get dehumidification, it's gonna start during April vacation. And be finished during the summer, um. See, um and the renovations are there are successfully going on at at Birch Hill in Main Dunstable. And just before February vacation, some of the teachers whose classrooms had been in the gym. Um for the whole beginning of the school year were moved into their new classrooms. And we're thrilled with um how quiet it was, and how there wasn't a constant hum of noise throughout the building. Um so um that's really it, just brief.
Thank you, okay, so this will bring us into public comments, Mr. Johnson, thank you, I appreciate your. Up-to-it-ness.
We should, we should trade this out every once in a while.
Oh dear, okay, so we have a lot of people um up for a second public comment, um so again, fifteen minute, I guess it's one, two. Six times three, eighteen, so it should fit in in public comment, so um. First with Janine Robey, hi.
Hi, hi again, so when I saw the numbers on the screen, uh it was really concerning. Um for all of our students again, I'm gonna speak mostly about Elm Street McCarthy. Because that seems to be my wheelhouse for twenty-four years. It's the school that houses the district programs, our bridges and our um project achievement programs. And which makes our classes look different. Um and we have different needs, in education, the saying that fair is not always equal rings true. We have students with different needs, background, experience, ways of learning, as professional teachers, we differentiate. Sometimes those needs among our students require support in the classroom. This is where our paraeducators come in, they do a great job, I don't know what I would do without them. However, they are hard to come by. Our staffing, our human capital is such that there are teachers that are left without that push-in para-support in their classrooms. With students that have support needs present. So when we look at the numbers at McCarthy, we cannot just look at that class size as a number, which doesn't look too bad. We need to ask and understand what that entails and what that looks like. Does it include all of our push-in intensive needs programs? Like bridges and project achievement? Absolutely, our program should push in, there is no questions about that. I get that we don't know, you know, how many of those students will be able to pu- push in. But we cannot make decisions on class sizes without considering that number. If we were to add all of those students in, that twenty-four would go up. Um and that is if we can very nicely evenly. Put them across the classes, so if there's, you know, X amount of classes and you have X amount of students, if you evenly distribute them for every. Class, if that does not happen, then you might have a class of twenty-two. But you also might have a class of thirty-one with lots of needs, and I know that Dr. Asparza and. You know, our leadership are working hard on this, but it is really worrying me. As I have a class with district programs in it this year, and the needs are coming at me. So quickly that without that support, those. Me adjusting would be hard to sustain. Um what we do have though now, what we do have right now is some amazing new teachers. That if their jobs are not cut, would serve the students of Nashville well and would reduce the number in the classrooms at McCarthy. Allowing classroom teachers to be able to handle the push-in needs with whatever support they were able to have. Look carefully at those numbers, because I don't see a recommendation from McCarthy that serves all the students well. And I get the idea of a budget, I have a student going to college next year, talk about scary budget cuts. I get it, but I strongly believe that our most prized line item is our staff and teachers. We will lose some staff that I have learned from this year, after twenty-four years, I've been inspired, I call it my oxygen. And I'm hopeful that that will continue, please do not consider the numbers alone, but the students' needs that they represent. Thank you again.
Mike Allen?
Mike Allen, Elm Street Middle School, um you've already heard from me a bunch, so I'll be quick. I am concerned about the exact same thing that Janine's concerned about, that twenty-four number in sixth grade at McCarthy. And uh in eighth grade as well, that may be twenty-four, if it's twenty-four average sixth, seventh, thirteenth graders, every professional can do that. But when you start pushing in with multiple students from these district programs, whether it be project achievement or um. Building bridges or any of them, uh three or four of them in a class of twenty-four. Making it twenty-eight, twenty-nine is difficult. Um even for the most seasoned and experienced and talented educator, that can be challenging, especially when I know that. I have multiple students who are supposed to have paras that don't, because they're pulled to go sub. There's just no paras in the building, um and other things get in the way. So uh when we're making decisions about what our new middle school is gonna look at, look like, I want every student to be involved. I want every student to be welcome, I want every student to be a part of my classroom, I want them in my room. But I want that to be equitable. But I want that to be equitable and fair for every student. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Holwa.
Hello, Alex Mola, 6 AR Street. I am just here to sort of ask, when is the grand redistricting committee going to come back, RE elementary schools and middle schools? As mentioned previously tonight, it's been over seven months. So those of us with kids, you know, really looking for the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we should have more information on that. Mr. Pearson? Can I? Yes, he did.
Ms. Bishop, can I just say something real quick?
I'm changing the subject a little bit, Mr. Pearson.
Wait, wait, one second. I just I've noticed that a bunch of staff are listing their home address. If you are staff or a student, you don't have to say your home address for public comments. You can just say staff member or even the school you teach at, but.
I'm a parent as well, so.
I just I just want to be clear because I don't want people to have to put their personal information out there that is protected.
They all know where I live. I showed them when we walked to the wastewater treatment plant. Walked by it. 28 Massachusetts, Nashville, New Hampshire, John Michael Pearson. So I've heard a lot about kids, kids, kids tonight. I sit in front of 86 kids every single day, 7th graders, and I'm a little partial to 7th grade, and it's not affecting the 8th graders like it is since the 7th graders. Every single one of my kids is gonna go to a new middle school next year, every single one of them. I heard Ms. Gilio, there's a tour happening for the the bigwigs of the city and the joint things. There's a tour for us on the Friday before April vacation. I haven't heard one thing about a tour for the students at either school, all three of them. They're going to Penachalk, they're going to Fairgrounds, they're going to Elm Street. There's been no talk of a push-up day for these kids at all. I want to guarantee that something like that happens in June because that's the most important thing. I know we've there's been talks about it, but again, it's coming up, and I haven't heard anything about it. We got ours April 15th or whatever that is, but I want these to I sit and talk to them every day about it. I talk, you know, I talked about the mascot with your son, I talked about Frozen with your daughter all the time. But we talk about this stuff because it's current events and it's important, and they don't know where they're going. They're nervous and this all this talk about students, but it's not really been about the students because they haven't they don't know where they're going, the ones in front of me at least. And that's the most important thing is the ones in front of us right now where they're going next year, not anything else. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Marku. Well, I wasn't unsure.
62 days. Adam Marku, Fort Delory Lane, from the Nashua Teachers Union. Remember the whole thing I said before about three equally balanced schools and 800 kids? And we don't have that, 800 kids, but we don't have balanced anything other than free and reduced lunch, which is important. Don't I'm not downplaying that balance, but we don't have that balance. And, you know, we balanced Elm Street. We talked about their you talked about class size at McCarthy, Fairgrounds, like the two-person team seems so archaic from back in the day when we used to have it at Penachalk too. But at least that deals with some of the 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 number issues. But let's be clear. Carrie, you talked about the move of the Broad Street line, and I know Broad Street people were not happy with me the last time I spoke, and they're not gonna like me now. They cost 12 physicians at Elm Street to McCarthy. The Monday before the board meeting, there was three teams of four. The Tuesday after the board meeting, there were no longer three teams of four. That is not hyperbole. That is fact. So there will be a net reduction in middle school teachers. And now with the last two slides in the talk tonight, we're gonna play Rob Peter to Pay Paul from the elementary people to cover the middle school. This is how I see it playing out. The budget, it's the budget. I get it. We have only so much money, but I'm not doing my job if I'm not up here telling you that we're gonna take where the yellow marks are, right? We're gonna move that FTE to do appease something at the middle school, but we took it from the elementary school. Am I wrong, veteran teachers? Hunger Games back again? We used to do this before COVID. Oh, and we'd hide the numbers and we really need another teacher here. Happened to me three times in Charlotte. Happened to some of you before. I get it. We have 5 million new dollars. We have to find it somewhere. Maybe it will be done through attrition. Maybe it will be done through winning the Mega Bucks. I don't know. But this cannot be an elementary versus middle school versus high school thing as it has in the past. The writing's on the wall that that's what's coming. The district hasn't said that. They haven't implied that, but being a senior member of this district in the union, this is what the writing on the wall is, having experienced it before. So I'm hoping we can avoid that type of situation because it's not good for any of us. Thank you. Would you like me to go on? I can. I could read a menu. I could talk about Dan buying us glasses for the solar eclipse. Dan, come on, you've got to have some money.
There that it was just really, it was good. Gary Hoffman.
Gary Hoffman, I've been on reality TV, and everybody knows my address, 38 Perham Street, I really don't care. And I have been, yeah, you can watch it, Seeking Adventure with Kinga Phillips, if you want to watch me on TV with my wife. But just two quick things. I, you know, I understand we have to do an ELL investment of, you know, around $900,000. I guess my my question, and it's a rhetorical question, but it's something for the board and and central office to consider is, you know, ELL teachers are really hard to find. What if we aren't able to find 12 to 14? What then happens to that money? Is it is could we bring people back perhaps? I don't know. It's a it's a question for you guys to investigate. I just I know how hard ELL teachers are to find, and to find 12 to 14 is gonna be a very tough lift. Second, as I said earlier, I was hoping to get a an answer to my my question about the projections for 2025. I can understand that there's gonna be likely some attrition between fifth and sixth grade. We know some kids, a lot of decent number of kids do go to the charter schools. What I do question is the decrease in numbers of total students from sixth to seventh to seventh to eighth, you know, in 2024, sixth grade, you still you have that 647, and then that same group of kids goes to 598 in seventh grade. I don't I just feel that those numbers decreasing by 50, I I think that might be a little bit overly optimistic a smut. So it's like a 38-person difference when it goes seventh and eighth grade. I only say that because when we've been talking about such narrow margins, whether we're gonna cut teachers or not, you know, we're talking to Dean and Mike, we're talking about some of the McCarthy numbers. I echo some of their concerns, but also Fairgrounds and Penachalk. I think we just got to make sure that we have the most realistic projections as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that wraps up public comment, brings us into board member comments. I started with Mr. Johnson last time, but I tried to flop around. So Ms. Lamphier, board member comments?
I don't have any comments tonight. It was lots of fun, though.
Ms. Raymond?
I did not actually prepare any comments. It's bizarre.
That's okay. Ms. Gilio?
I I do not have any comments, unfortunately. I had to leave the room for like only one speaker, and and I understand that there was a question raised about when we were gonna look at the elementary redistricting. And is there do we have a timeframe for that? I wasn't here during that whole conversation.
I just said we need to start.
Okay, there's no timetable right now.
I think right now we're we're pretty hyper-focused on the budget and making that work. I know that's where my focus is, but we need to start getting the behind the the committees going and.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I hate to leave any part of the meeting. I really to be gone for even two minutes.
Ms. Daniels Williams?
So thankful for all the information. I thank you, Dr. Andre, and to all the teachers that took time to put this all together. I I'm very thankful to know this information now. Little sad about the outcomes, you know, knew that we were gonna lose 13 teachers with Broad Street and making that decision. That's my board comment. It just makes me sad that we're gonna lose teachers because they're who give our children hope and teach them everything, so.
Prin?
I don't have a lot to say except for thank you for the information. It was a lot, but it was good. It was very informative, and I really hope that as we move forward with the budget that we're not eliminating students. It's really important.
Johnson?
Yeah, and echo thank you for the information. I mean, I think at the last meeting, we had a lot of the new people here saying, we need more information, and this week we we got a lot of information that definitely helps us know more of what's going on and what to do going forward. And so thank you very much for putting all that together for us.
I think I think we heard you last time and really wanted to focus on it. The only the only board comment that I have is I think we're in the middle of having a lot of weighty discussions, and we're having discussions about philosophy, and we're having discussions about, you know, the the black and white of things and and how do we how do we intersect them well without decreasing student outcomes and decreasing what our community is? So I'm looking forward to having more of these conversations. I will try to keep our meetings as forward-focused and with momentum as I can. I don't want us to get stuck in the weeds about things. So if you guys, if I'm hearing kind of the same questions over and over again, I know that we've missed an opportunity to give information. So this is going to be a lot of, I think a lot of times we have meetings and they're siloed meetings. I think this is gonna be just conversations within conversations. So I appreciate everybody for participating in all of this. We're taking a look at the information before we came in so that we had, you know, some guided questions that we already wanted to ask. And I want to thank the public for coming and participating. I know our meetings can be long and dry, but I I think we're coming into a section of time where the board is making some monumental decisions that are that deserve the the weight and the breadth that we're going to be giving it. So I appreciate everybody for coming. And if you guys don't feel like you got answers to questions, feel free to email. We'll pass them on. I really want to make sure that when we get to the end of this, nobody's saying, what the heck just happened? So want to make sure that we we get there. So thank you very much. And with that, I am looking for a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A32.
So moved.
Nope, 91E, sorry.
So moved. Second.
Who seconded?
Me.
Ms. Prin, thank you. Okay, we have to do a roll call vote. Do you want me to just read them off? Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels Williams? Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond? Ms. Lamphier? Ms. Me, yes. Okay, we are now in non-public as of 9:25. This shouldn't take too long, but everybody needs to filter out if you guys want to take a quick bio break.
Two.
Like like a tight two.